If it's pleasure you're about and you feel like stepping out, all you got to shout is "Let me off uptown." If it's rhythm that you feel, then it's nothing to conceal. All you got to spiel is "Let me off uptown." Ripjoints, juke joints, hip joints. Where could a fella go to top it? If you want to pitch a ball and you can't afford a haul, all you got to call is "Let me off uptown." Ripjoints, juke joints, hip joints. Where could a fella go to top it? If you want to pitch a ball and you can't afford a haul, all you got to call is "Let me off uptown." Come on and let me off uptown.
Again, we thank everyone for being here. We thank everyone for being flexible in moving the items forward that we have to hear this evening. There's a rather lengthy piece that I need to read to make sure everyone either watching, listening, or that will be included in tonight's agenda. We need to make sure everyone hears. So, starting by the rezoning requests that receive an unfavorable recommendation from the planning commission may be appealed by the applicant to the Wilmington City Council. Appeals should be in the form of a letter submitted to the city clerk within 10 days of this hearing. Appeals for items 1, 2, 4, 6, 7, 9, and 10 will be heard at the June 2, 2020 City Council meeting. Appeals for items 3 and 8, which are associated with special use permit requests, will be heard at a future City Council meeting once restrictions due to the COVID-19 have been lifted. A designated convention center staff person will run the Zoom aspect of the meeting so that each commissioner may be able to focus on the meeting rather than the technology. This person will be able to advance slides in the presentation, see who is digitally raising their hands or physically raising their hands, commission members, and control the ability to mute participants. All planning commission members should mute their microphones when they're not speaking. Be sure there is no background noise and that if you have any alerts on your computer, please silence those. When a commissioner wishes to speak via Zoom, they will raise their hand. When you raise your hand, we will call on you and then you'll state your name first and so that everyone that's watching the meeting will also know who is speaking. Please do not speak until I call on you. If you begin speaking and you're not heard, you will be reminded to unmute yourself. Applicants will be limited to 10 minutes to give their presentation and there will be a total of five extra minutes for those others wishing to speak in favor of a proposal and 10 minutes for those that are speaking against a proposal. I will also read into the record this evening following the folks speaking in favor and the folks that would be speaking against here physically at the meeting. I will read into the record the ones that were posted on our website and received by Ms. Bradshaw earlier this afternoon. Glenn Harbeck to my left will be in the meeting room and mark the time. When the applicant speaks, Glenn will raise his hand at a two and a half minute mark or in this case, a five minute mark, the one minute mark, and then verbally call time when the time expires. When the public hearing opens, Glenn will raise his hand and will mark that five minute mark, one minute mark verbally when time expires. And this will all total up to about 25 minutes per item. The public has been encouraged to submit their comments in writing via web-based form. These comments were forwarded unedited to the members of the planning commission. All votes for tonight's meeting by the planning commission will be a roll call vote. After proper motions are made and consistency statements read into the record, the chair will call each member by name and each member should clearly state their name and vote either yea or nay at that time. After the votes are cast, the chair will state the outcome of the vote and the action. If at any time during the meeting, a commission member gets disconnected from the meeting, the meeting will briefly pause to give you time to return to the meeting. This process requires extra patience and extra time, so slow down. The chair should be prepared to frequently restate comments and questions and ask for a green light to continue moving on. Talking over each other tonight will cause excessive delays, so please use the raising your hand, physically raising your hand, and speak only when you're called on. We do have a very lengthy meeting this evening and we want to make sure everyone is heard and all of the public input is taken into consideration. So again, we thank you all for being here and we would like to get this meeting underway. Our first agenda on the item is the approval of the minutes from the March 4, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. I'm... All commission members have received copies of these and I think have read through them. Are there any comments, questions, or additions to the minutes at this time?
No, sir.
Okay. Seeing none, seeing no hands raised, we're going to move forward and I'll request a motion for the approval of the minutes.
This is Jeff Hovis. I'll make a motion for the approval of the minutes.
We have a motion presented. We have a motion by Mr. Hovis to approve the minutes as written. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Cortez. Thank you. Now I will call each member's name in order and you state your name and your vote. Commissioner Collier, aye. Commissioner Hovis?
Aye.
Commissioner Lyle?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowman?
Aye.
Unmute Mr. Sharp. Aye, thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Cortez?
Aye.
And Commissioner Woodruff?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate those minutes are approved and will be adopted into the record. We will now start with item number one under new business. Item one is a conditional district rezoning modification. The property containing 0.327 of an acre with parcel IDs, a lot of parcel IDs located at 501, 503, and 505 South 17th Street from UMX CD to Urban Mixed Use Conditional District. Urban Mixed Use Conditional District will allow 1,700 square feet of commercial space and a maximum of 28 residential units. Nicole Smith, the associate planner, will be presenting this for the staff at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Commissioner Hovis has a brief request before we start that and then we can move forward with it.
You are right. I am sorry. Commissioners, Commissioner Hovis has asked before the meeting to be recused from this item. So if I could entertain a motion, please, for the recusal of Commissioner Hovis from this item?
I manage.
I have a motion from Commissioner Bowman to recuse and I have a second. It looks like from Commissioner Woodruff. All in... Commissioner Collier says aye. Commissioner Lyle?
Lyle says aye.
Commissioner Bowman?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharp?
Sharp says aye.
Commissioner Cortez?
Cortez says aye.
And Commissioner Woodruff?
Aye.
Thank you. That's carried. Mr. Hovis, you are recused from this item due to COVID-19. You stayed in your seat. All right, we're going to move forward with item number one now. Nicole Smith will be bringing this item.
Thank you, Chairman Collier. Good evening, commissioners. The site before you this evening includes three parcels, an adjacent right-of-way, and is located south of Church Street and east of South 17th Street. This depicts the area that includes the three parcels as well as the right-of-way. This map provides site context and highlights the site location. Next slide. This slide provides the existing conditions of the site. The top images are looking north and south on South 17th Street. The bottom left image illustrates the intersection of Church Street and South 17th Street. The bottom right image is of the vacant site. Next slide. This slide illustrates the existing adjacent development. The top two images are of the single-family homes located south and east of the request. The bottom image is of the ABC store located north of the request. Next slide. The subject property is located within the 1945 corporate limits and is identified as significant properties within the Westbrook-Ardmore National Historic Registered District. All parcels are currently undeveloped. In August 2008, several bungalows, some which were contributing structures and some non-contributing structures, were demolished in anticipation of an expansion of the existing ABC retail operation. Effective March 2013, the property south of the request was rezoned to UMX Urban Mixed Use District as part of the initial UMX zoning initiated by the city. On February 20, 2018, the subject property was rezoned from R5 Residential Single Family to Urban Mixed Use Conditional District by City Council. The current UMX CD zoning allows for a mixed-use development with a maximum of six residential units, 11,200 square feet of commercial space, and an ice vending machine. On February 5, 2020, a request to rezone the property from Urban Mixed Use Conditional District to Urban Mixed Use with no conditions was filed and later withdrawn at the Planning Commission meeting. Next slide. The applicant proposes to modify the current conditional district to allow for a three-story mixed-use development containing a maximum of 28 residential units and 1,700 square feet of commercial. Potential commercial uses will be limited to office, personal services, retail, and restaurant with no drive-through facility. Access will be provided via driveway connections off of Sarah Alley and Church Street. The existing driveway apron on South 17th Street will be closed. Next slide. On your screen is the elevation proposed by the applicant. Building design, including entrance distinction, materials, and massing will be reviewed by the Technical Review Committee prior to construction release. Next slide. The comprehensive plan identifies this area as an urban mixed-use center. The plan calls for the site to develop with high and moderate densities and lot coverage, include a rich mix of uses, place buildings directly onto public streets, and provide active ground floors. The UMX District is a diverse zoning district from an urban design perspective. Features of the UMX District include a 10-foot maximum building setback from public streets, surface parking shielded from public view, sidewalk connections and pedestrian interconnections. A mixed-use development at this location would be compatible with the existing mix of residential and commercial uses in the area. Trip generation compared to the current approval results in an overall decrease in trips in both the PM peak and average weekday two-way volume trips, as well as an increase of five trips in the AM peak. The proposed rezoning will allow for development that provides sidewalk and street scape enhancements along one of the city's major thoroughfares. The proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan and the city's adopted focus areas. Staff believes the request is reasonable and in the public interest and recommends conditional approval, subject to the conditions outlined in your case summary. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We appreciate that. Would there be any questions by the commission at this time? Commissioner Bowman?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if we called a quorum for tonight. I just wanted to remind you of that.
Oh, thank you, sir. One moment. Mr. Attorney, do we have a quorum for tonight's meeting?
I apologize about that. Yes, sir, we do. There's a quorum present.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. Any questions for staff at this time on item number one? Mr. Woodruff?
Nicole, as I read the zoning, there is no minimum requirement for parking. Is that accurate?
That is correct. The Urban Mixed Use District has no parking minimums to satisfy.
And I just noted from the comments we received today, fairly consistency. There were some questions about parking, depending on how many units are going to be there, not enough parking, at least not one for one. Is that a consideration that goes into what you look at?
That is something that staff considered when we're reviewing this proposal. We are certain that the applicant proposes 20 parking spaces off-street, as well as the existing conditions along both South 17th and Church Street allow for on-street parking currently. The proposal that's currently approved previously only allowed for 11 off-street parking spaces.
That was only for six units, wasn't it?
It was six residential units, but there was a significant commercial component, 11,200 square feet.
From staff's perspective, you don't have a problem with the proposed parking arrangement as presented?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commission at this time? Mr. Sharp?
In the public comments, there was a question that the alley did not open on both ends. Is that accurate or is it a through alley?
Ms. Smith?
There has not been a street closure for Sarah Alley. However, I do believe that when the ABC store retail expanded, they did encroach into the alley.
So therefore, all ingress and egress is through an alley, which is only open at one end?
There's also a driveway off of Church Street.
I couldn't see that on the plan.
Give us one second.
So the applicant, if you look on the site plan on your screen, it says there's an existing drive apron off of Church Street. The applicant anticipates using the existing drive apron off of Church as well as the new driveway access off of Sarah Alley. The only driveway apron that would be closed as part of this request is the existing one along South 17th Street.
So could you point where the existing access point is on to Church? I see handicap parking.
We're getting ready to take care of that, Mr. Sharp. Brian's coming up to be able to point to it physically.
Where the mouse is located right now is the proposed access to the alley, which will in turn go out to the Church Street right away via the alley. I think the driveway on 17th Street will be closed and I believe the driveway on Church will be closed and access will be limited to the alley. That's my understanding, but I think the applicant might be able to shed some light on that as well.
Mr. Sharp, I think it may be best we'll let the applicant talk through that driveway when they're doing their presentation, that they can probably answer that question more fully than we can at this point. Any other additional questions of staff? All right, seeing none, the applicant is here and has a presentation. So the applicant is Mr. Dave Soptrino and he will be making his presentation now.
Okay, do I need to turn that off when I'm not speaking? Got it. I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Trying to figure out where I should stand. Good evening, my name is Dave Soptrino. Thank you, staff, for your presentation. Next slide. A little quick story while we're getting to the next slide. I grew up, my twenties, I spent in this neighborhood, so I'm familiar with Carolina Place. Got married on Carolina Place and now I get to come back and do a cool project. In context, this is Church and 17th. What we like about the neighborhood in general is there's some nice activity along Castle and some growth that encourages some logical and some mixed-use development. Next slide. We took some great pains and some real great effort and influence from our architect, LS3P. The charge to them was, look, we do not want a modern-looking building. We want a building that has not just character, but something that can resonate with the neighborhood, pitched roofs, gable roofs. Next slide. In this image and to Mr. Sharp's concern, I am not a fan of curb cuts. Actually, I despise curb cuts and if we could address curb cuts throughout the community, we would solve all kinds of problems. So in this instance, I'm going to use the existing curb cut that's currently on the site at Sarah Alley, improve that curb cut, but then come in Sarah Alley and enter into parking at the rear. We've got approximately 20 spaces off-street and we've also closed the curb cut on 17th, which in of itself is a wonderful thing for 17th Street if you follow curb cuts the way I seem to. The site plan, I've anchored each end at the top of your page and the bottom with commercial spaces and at the very bottom, this doesn't show it as well, I've got some outdoor space like, not necessarily pavilion style, but think of it like a pergola or trellis. Next slide. And then this is the view coming down 17th Street. So you're coming from the hospital, you cross Dawson, you cross Booster, you cross Castle, you're approaching ABC and you see this building. One of the things that we hope addresses traffic calming along this arterial road would be the planting of significant trees along with a building that is up against the sidewalk, which is part of the urban-style development. The ABC store hurts our traffic a little bit because their parking is in the front. Not going to go backwards with the ABC store, but we are going to focus our building on the street with our parking in the rear. Next slide. We absolutely meet the comprehensive plan. I won't go into detail here. Next slide. I do want to use this slide to reference a few things as it relates to some of the public comments that we saw. In this slide, you are looking at what is currently approved and what we are proposing. If I can go through my list, what I'll do is I'll now kind of roll this into my presentation. First things first, we were not involved and in no part involved with ABC Store's decision to purchase these homes and remove them. We weren't a fan of that action either. That was 12 years ago. We are where we are now and we're looking to do a project that moves forward, but I want to clear up that misconception. I want to also recognize and acknowledge the outreach efforts that we made in this process, recognizing that we are required to reach out to 300-foot radius. That included 73 neighbors. To them, they were sent 219 mailings. In our mailings, we included an introduction, contact information, my personal email, my personal cellphone number, the site plan and renderings that you see here, along with this sheet, that makes sure people are clear as to what is going to be different and why we think our proposed project is a value add to the community. I also started each message off with a clear indication as to our vision. This project, the goal was to shift from being predominantly commercial to predominantly residential. We had a mailing on March 6 for a meeting on March 18. We received two calls ahead of that meeting. However, at the meeting, there was no attendance. We assumed that was at the very beginning of COVID-19. With staff's encouragement, we held a second virtual meeting. That meeting included a mailing on April 17 and a virtual meeting was held on April 27. I received three emails and two phone calls and I also enjoyed a nice 50-minute phone conversation during the virtual meeting with one of the neighbors who, for her, she just wanted to listen in. For me, I got a sounding board to hear what she liked and didn't like about the community as a whole and it was an enjoyable conversation. I've provided detailed recaps of both meetings and comments to staff. Thank you. I would also make sure to like to note that it has always been a priority for our company to create projects that our neighbors can support and embrace. Transparency and understanding our role as it relates to a community and transition has always been important, especially with our infill projects. This project is no different. We did what we believed to be was the best we could do to reach, in these circumstances, to reach out to as many people and make it easier for them to ask questions, meet us online, or however they felt comfortable to learn more about our proposal. One of the things I'd like to comment about in the new format where petition, where neighbors can communicate online, I do believe that the ease of access provided for some additional comments without requiring people to come to public meetings, I don't know if that translates to people who felt they should have come or if it was just easy to click on a link and provide comments. The online portal went live April 21 and I think what may have occurred yesterday was we had a next-door message or something that occurred, but in the last 24 hours, we received 12 separate comments from eight separate households. And of those eight separate households, they raised a concern, seven of those households, unfortunately, they were outside of our 300-foot radius. They did not receive the mailing or the notifications and while I'm listed and certainly accessible, I was not contacted by any of those neighbors with the exception of one who was within that radius. That neighbor called with an email to support the project and provide a list of suggestions in order to make our presence, our temporary presence under construction, not a burden on the community. Unfortunately, he sent another letter saying he doesn't support the project, so I'm not sure where I stand there. One of the concerns I'd like to raise or I'd like to address some of the concerns from the neighbors, we received two comments specific to waste removal. How is trash... the neighbors, we received two comments specific to waste removal. How is trash being managed? Trash will be in six private carts, meaning a company will pull up to the site, go to the trash corral, take the carts to the curb, dump the trash and take that trash back to the trash can back to the corral. At no point or will there ever be 28 trash cans lined up on Church Street all day long with people bringing their trash there. Trash will be managed by a third party. In the event that we need more trash pickup, we can, instead of adding carts, we have the benefit of adding pickup times. Our times are usually timed with out of the cities. Six comments were relating to traffic and traffic calming, the flow of Seventeenth and Church, speeding and accidents along Seventeenth Street, and concerns over increase in traffic on secondary streets. I'd like Don Bennett to expand on how our trip generation is actually going down with this proposal. What I'll focus on is my experience that buildings, trees, and improving vacant lots tend to help with traffic calming as does on-street parking. Yes, Sixteenth and Seventeenth Streets are not great streets to live on. That is why single-family homes are not desirable at this location and something like this project seems to make more logic. We also anticipate the potential for a crosswalk at Seventeenth and Church and are reaching out to DOT to help that. If you're not aware, across from this site is a city park and hopefully that city park can be enjoyed not just by our new neighbors, but our existing neighbors with the ease of access across Seventeenth Street. And again, a big one for me, as I mentioned earlier, we are removing that mid-block curb cut along that arterial South Seventeenth Street. There were four comments that seemed to center around density and this is great for me to speak because I get to help educate and kind of share some of my experiences in recent communications on the Workforce and Housing Committee. One of the comments was, we see, we love to see mixed use, but we think 28 apartments is too many. Want to make sure we clarify and we are certainly glad to make this a condition if that assists in your review and approval of this project. Our proposal focuses on four studio apartments, 18 one-bedroom apartments, and three two-bedroom apartments. Sorry?
One minute.
Thank you. We are proposing 25 units as defined by our code. However, our total density is 28 sleeping areas. So while on one hand, I can understand that 28 units may sound like a lot, but it's not 28 three- or four-bedroom units. It's essentially 28 bedrooms in 25 units. Without digressing too far into the deficiencies and negative effects of measuring density versus kitchens, one of the commentators suggested 14 units. However, if we did 14 units, there's nothing preventing us from doing three- or four-bedroom units. 14 units at four bedrooms is 56 sleeping units. 56 sleeping units is significantly more than our proposed 28 sleeping units. We recognize the needs and the importance of bringing density to our area, but at the same time, more importantly, we are underserved as a community with one-bedroom apartments. We take that burden on. We welcome that burden and I'll finish my comments after the public comments are read. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soptrino. I appreciate that. At this time, we're going to open the public hearing and I would ask if there are any folks here in the, at the convention center that are wishing to speak in favor of item number one, to please step forward. And when you begin, there will be five minutes for that initial presentation. Comment here, excuse me. Okay. It doesn't seem that there are any folks speaking in favor of, so we will now ask if there are folks in the convention center that would like to speak against this item. Please come forward. There'll be 10 minutes for those that are in opposition. And if you would, make sure when you come forward that you clearly state your name and your address before you make your comments. Thank you.
My name's Michael Sneed. I live at 1707 Church Street, which is directly across the street from where Mr. Soptrino is planning on funneling all the traffic in and out of his new development. The, I have several issues. First off, I'm sure out of all the emails, nobody was in support of the project 100%. This loosely fits the definition of urban mix with only very limited commercial space, 16 to 1700 square feet. The street access is a dead-end alley with one way in and one way out for supposedly 25 units plus business traffic to come in and park, sleep on a daily basis. The street parking, which is ample, is limited whenever the residents that already live there are home. Whenever everyone is at home, there's probably three to five available spaces. That would be with what he has proposed with the off-street parking and the five places that he has. If anybody comes over, any commercial business, it's excessive for the streets the way it is. The intersection of Seventeenth and Church is dangerous already. There was two accidents last week. The... I didn't see anything in his plans as far as addressing stormwater. Church Street between Eighteenth and Seventeenth, whenever it rains, it's practically a river and you're going to pave and create all this impermeable space so that more water can come in and cause issues. I looked over at the traffic assessment. It must have been done during COVID. It seems like a joke for the amount of traffic that comes in and out of Church Street between Sixteenth and Eighteenth there. That is the cut-through so that they can come Sixteenth to Wrightsville Avenue and avoid lights hundreds a day. Not what he's proposed or not what his, um, his plans reflect. And the park across the street is, it's a green area. It gets mowed every couple of weeks and there is one grill. The city, I would say, out of all the parks I've seen in New Hanover County, it is probably the most poorly kept-up park. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sneed. We appreciate you being here. Are there others that would like to speak?
I was not opposed to the initial concept that you had with...
Could you give, please state your name and your address, please?
I'm Michael Sneed, 1707 Street. I was not opposed. I was actually excited about the initial plan because whenever I purchased the house exactly two years and three months ago, after you guys approved to change it to the urban mixed use that was outlined and is currently approved, I think that the neighborhood as a whole, um, commercial spaces, they are gone in the evenings. It's not back-and-forth traffic. It's eight to five and it does not bother the residents as much as adding 25, 28 more units would.
Thank you, sir. Sorry for the delay. We're just making sure if there's anyone else that would like to speak that they are given the opportunity. We're holding the time a little bit, I hope. All right, seeing that there are no additional folks that would like to speak in opposition to item number one, we will now close the public hearing. Thank you all for your input. I will now read into the record the comments that we've received from folks on the website over the last 24 hours or 36 hours. In regards to, this is from Mr. Greg Wessel. In regards to zoning of 501, 503, and 505, South Seventeenth Street, I would like to state my opposition for some of the following reasons. The city has developed a plan for UMX zoning with regards to maintaining and improving the character of neighborhoods and improved quality of life. The current UMX plan, as it is written, should be adhered to without exception as the developer's current proposal to add 22 additional units harms the surrounding properties and does nothing to improve the quality of life for the existing residents or the community at large. The city invited feedback from the community and the code was adopted with this feedback in mind. I am also opposed to the plan for these additional reasons. Modification is solely for the convenience and financial benefit to the developer and there is no hardship or reason not to follow the existing UMX guidelines. Rezoning of the property is solely for providing a means of a building, of building and apartment building without utilizing conforming guidelines. It is my belief that a large three-story box of a building without setback will not slow traffic but increase traffic speed as cars can no longer see that you're entering a residential neighborhood. Furthermore, traffic will not be reduced on Seventeenth Street. There will be increased cut-through traffic on a slower residential street. Sarah Alley does not have egress next to the ABC store as it appears in parentheses, so the only way out of the three parallel spaces is to back down the alley out across the sidewalk into the street. There are currently visibility issues and will become more challenging with the inevitable crowded parking. From the plan, it appears that there is not sufficient space for a dumpster or 28 trash cans to be properly stored on-site. Parking on Church Street is already somewhat limited and at times, limited at times and certainly not sufficient for 28 additional units. It is documented that the ABC does not have sufficient parking at times and must overflow park on Seventeenth Street. The stormwater review should be conducted before any rezoning attempt. Water runoff is already an issue on this block and the additional runoff presents a risk to the existing property owners. Flooding already exists on Seventeenth Street and there is an addition, and there is the additional issue of increased runoff in Burnt Mill Creek watershed. When the ABC tried to develop the site, they encountered issues with stormwater management, so a review must be completed before any rezoning attempt. Finally, there are numerous issues with the city's assessment of the benefits of rezoning. Regardless, existing guidelines should be followed for consistency and fairness to all involved parties in parentheses, present and future in parentheses, rezoning applications. Further, there should be no concerns from the city that the site can be developed to a greater benefit of the community by fulfilling the obligations of the existing UMX guidelines. And that was from Mr. Greg Wessel. We also have a comment from Deborah Kaiser and I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name. To whom it may concern, the original proposal is good. Why make changes? The changes seem to be a cover for a high-density apartment complex. It is not, it is not neighborhood-friendly. I do not see it promoting walking or integration into the neighborhood and there are not enough parking spaces to accommodate the residents and the businesses. This is a bad idea. Stick with the original proposal. Ms. Kaiser also noted, I want a residential and commercial building but not 28 units. The proposal does not have enough parking. It will interrupt the flow of Seventeenth and Church. It does not seem to incorporate any greenery and I doubt there is a plan for the runoff. It just does not seem well-thought. A quick money-making venture done during COVID-19 with the hope that no one will notice. This is from Ms. Ellsworth. Very concerned about parking for the apartments or lack thereof. Also, I thought that there was a problem with the water table, which was the reason the ABC store couldn't build on that land. It is a very bad idea. This is from Thomas Ellsworth. I'm a resident of 1820 Wrightsville Avenue, which is not too far from the subject site. I am not in favor of amending the zoning bylaws to enable greater density on the site. Residents fought long and hard to prevent the expansion of the ABC store and building something larger is not in the best interest of the neighborhood. This is from Norrie Simonneau. I hope this email finds you well. This is to Nicole Smith. As a long-term owner at 307 South Seventeenth Street, I have watched the traffic on this road go from bad to worse over the past eight years. After watching a father and his son almost run over by a car on the sidewalk full speed, I started a dialogue with the city and the state about some action being taken to regulate traffic that speeds from Castle to Market Street. The only real difference, I believe, would be additional lights between the two. I know on other road projects, Eastwood Road and Oliander, for example, developers have been required to install additional lights as a part of their project. With the addition of townhomes on the same block that span from South Sixteenth to South Seventeenth, I am worried about what is to come for this residential stretch of South Seventeenth Street. Are additional lights being considered, question mark? The wrecks I have seen with people trying to leave the neighborhood and jet across Seventeenth Street along with drivers literally just veering off the road and onto the sidewalks and into the yards is shocking. Your response is considered and, your response and consideration is appreciated. I think it's Brian Bristoff. I am the owner of CoWorks and have played an active role in the development of the cargo district, which is located two blocks from the proposed project. We have seen exciting positive change in this neighborhood over the last three years and fully support the development. Respectfully, Brian Kristoff. Sorry, I pronounced that wrong originally. This is from Michael Dell. Good morning. I just became aware of the zoning change request for the ABC property. While I have numerous concerns, I cannot find sites, I cannot find sites requirements for trash pickup. Will 28 apartments require dumpster or 28 trash cans on Church Street? If a dumpster is 14-foot drive allowed for the truck or could he put dumpster on the street? If you can tell me where to find that information, I will appreciate it. I hope you and your family are well. Eileen Sutton. Well, I'm all for multi-use and density. My biggest concern with the scope of this project is the complete lack of parking for both the proposed residential units as well as the proposed businesses. Bike parking is great, but should not be seen as a substitute for vehicular parking. Parking for this complex will spill over into the residential neighborhood as would subsequent traffic. People do not park on Seventeenth Street if they can avoid it due to the high traffic speed and the chance of collision. Although I don't live immediately next to the project, I do frequently walk there and I would hate to see an increase in traffic due to an increase of parked vehicles, if at all avoidable. The plan needs either to account for more designated parking or needs to have less residential units so that there is at least one parking space available for residential and business. This is from Nancy Wheeler. In addition to being incongruent for the location, the site has high water table, which was discovered when the ABC was planning to expand. They would have had to build a large retention pond, which made it not feasible for them. Before any rezoning is granted, this needs to be researched. This would be from M. Rollo. I'm not sure of the first name. We already have excessive vehicular traffic on Church Street. Most contractors from current apartment project on Seventeenth, mostly contractors from a current apartment project on Seventeenth. They overspeed and often run stop signs. They also throw their garbage out the window passing by. I know this because I've seen them. It is already intolerable. Now we will have 28 more apartments. Where are the potential 56 cars going to park? This seems to be from Mr. John Rollo. I have seen the site plan. There are not enough parking spaces for the proposed number of apartments. 20 to 22 parking spaces is very inadequate. The overflow will park on Church Street between Seventeenth and Eighteenth. There are five residences that use Church Street between Seventeenth and Eighteenth Streets to park their cars. We must do this because there are no driveways. It is all on-street parking for us all. Yes, I realize anyone can park and, can park a car legally on Church Street. However, it is not right for these on-street spaces to be taken by apartment tenants or customers of the of the businesses in this development. Plus, there will be much more traffic in the intersection of Church and 18th. This intersection is already very busy with traffic feeding into and out of the neighborhoods of Ardmore and Carolina Place. The development shouldn't, should cut the number of apartments to 14. Greed on the part of Mr. Spatino and his partner should not prevail." From John Rollo. And that concludes the public comments that were received on, on our website, on the, on the posted venue. So we appreciate all of those comments from Mr. Sneed here in person and those who commented on the website itself. At this time, we will physically close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, before doing that, let me briefly address the legislative change from this week.
Please, sir.
Pursuant to the North Carolina Legislature, the city is required to leave the online public comment open for 24 hours preceding, or following the public hearing. So we've made steps to do that, so that will remain open. But with that being said, that'll be the same for every item on the agenda tonight. But with that being said, we can proceed. Thank you.
Does that mean, do I need to close the public hearing still, or no?
No, sir.
No, I do not. Okay, all right. My apologies. All right, at this time, I would like to have Mr. Spatino come back to the podium, please. I'm sure the commission may have some questions for you at this time. Thank you, sir. Are there questions from the commission for the applicant at this point? I see Commissioner Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Spatino, I like the design, and I think it's a sensible design. I have a couple of questions, though. You have driveway only off of the alley, and essentially a one-lane wide alley. Did you look at the possibility of at least making the curb cut going to the alley maybe wider or accommodate two-way traffic out of the lot?
Yes, we had a, excuse me, yes, under our TRC pre-approval meeting, we are going to be improving that curb cut, not adding a curb cut, but we're enhancing an existing curb cut.
Okay, well, I guess to be more specific, sir, the, have you given thought to maybe widening the curb cut in the, that feeds to the alley such that it might be 20 or 22 feet wide as you get to the parking lot thereafter, reducing in width?
Yes, again, we are going to be directed by our, the engineers have already, since you're seeing what you're seeing, the engineers have already offered some suggestions and provided some input and making sure that the movements are appropriate for the project.
Okay, and two more quick things. I understand that if this moves forward, it will be with the condition that it satisfies the city's stormwater requirements, and I know that's an engineering matter to come.
I, too, was impressed by the number of people concerned with my high-water table. I try not to take it personally or feel any sense of, oh, I don't know, you know, self-consciousness about the water table, but I have the very best engineers, and I assure you, city staff is going to make sure that I am equal to or greater than by existing conditions.
Okay, last point. Could you, and I don't know if you have the ability to move the cursor, but can you identify, maybe by description on the plan, where you intend to put the six trash carts that you will have for the refuse?
I don't have cursor control, but I can tell you that they will be at the southernmost part of the site. I don't want them along Church Street. I do want them to be in the parking, so if I could describe to you, they would be along Sarah Alley and then our parking landscape area, again, along the, I guess it would be along the eastern boundary of the site. Look, it looks like there are three parallel parking spaces.
Right.
Starting at the top, that is number one landscaping, number two landscaping, number three trash corral.
Okay, well, then, that answers my last question, which was the difficulty of unloading those parking spaces on the alley that are parallel. So that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. Others from the commission at this time? Thank you. Mr. Sharp?
One of the criteria of, of the proposal is an active ground floor. Could you explain how the ground floor that's fronting on 17th Street will, will be active?
Sure. If we could go to the elevation drawing on my slides, and if it's okay, we'll take the elevation drawing that has the two images, one as seen from Church and 17th, and then one seen from the ABC store coming down 17th. Okay, in that picture, there's a couple of things happening here. We are required and willing, of course, to include handicap homes on the ground floor. So three, the three in the middle, where you don't see the storefront windows, those are residential. Those are residential with plantings in front of them, and they move with the building and the roof lines. On this anchor on this end, you have two things happening. On the corner, that is a retail space. It is about 1,000 square feet. It is predominantly glass at the corner. To the left, that is the resident lobby. So if you live in this home, you are not necessarily on the street. You are coming in, parking either on the street or behind the building, and accessing at that point. As you work your way down into the image on the right, I was trying to do something special in this area because I've got some additional land. We are closing that curb cut that is shown, but I've got doors and a, what I'm hoping is, I'll use the term third place. It's large enough for a coffee place or a sandwich shop. We will not be allowing amplified music or cooking or hoodwink facilities, but if you look where the umbrellas are, I've got an area there that's about 14 by 18 feet that I think could be a nice brick courtyard, a pergola above, maybe some string carnival lights, and that allows me a gathering area for not only the immediate residents but those in the general neighborhood.
Commissioner Sharp, does that address your question? All right, other commissioners, questions? All right. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Cortez?
I'm still struggling with the, the parking issue. I kind of feel for all of the people that have been commenting on it. I mean, I'm, I believe you when you say you're addressing the stormwater thing, but I, I can see parking being a real nightmare.
Ms. Cortez, I, Ms. Cortez, I appreciate your question. I'm not sure if I'm being heard. Is my sound on?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. And your timing is impeccable because before I finish my initial presentation, I was just about to talk about parking. In my world, I've learned good, bad, or indifferent, that the four things I have to worry about with regard to a successful project include parking, stormwater, trash, and pet poop or pet waste. And those are the first four things I start with before I'm able to do anything actually exciting and interesting. With regard to parking, there's a couple of things that worked to our advantage. Being downtown, we enjoy a grid pattern. There is ample on-street parking. I recognize that a high number of people on Church Street who choose not to park behind their homes, they have alleys behind their homes, and they park on the street. We do not want to displace anybody. 17th Street is not a fun street. That's why nobody really wants to live there in a single-family home and why this property was probably rezoned in the first place. However, when, as we've seen on Fifth Street and some of the other streets where we've been in similar circumstances, there is about eight parking spaces along our building, especially with the inclusion of that closed curb cut. Additionally, across the street, there's a city park, and while one of the speakers was kind of maligning that park, I think that park could be someplace special, and I think that park could be someplace that could become activated. But right now, that park has no houses on it. And selfishly, I take those, that park and that parking spaces that come with it. If you look at that park, it's 400 linear feet. Even on a bad day, that's 15 to 18 parking spaces that aren't directly attributed to a home in front of them. So while I'm agreeable that this is not a fantastic big-box shopping center with a massive amount of parking, we are not finding in any of our projects a situation where someone can't park their car and then see where they need to walk to, and that's the big hook. People want to be able to see, they don't need to be in front of their door, but when they get out of their car and they grab their keys and they lock their door, they need to be able to see the building. And being on a corner, not just the parking behind, which for 25 or 28 bedrooms rather, is actually pretty impressive, especially given that we're close to a, several bus stations, we're a block from a number of bus lines, not all of our residents are going to have a car. Couple that with probably a 10% vacancy, so now you're backing down to me really only needing 24, 25 cars all the time. Additionally, the commercial that's open during the day, those parking spaces are available for them while people are at work. So in conclusion, on the parking, we have, excuse me, that wasn't me, sorry, I excused somebody else. While we, while we thought about parking, and while we don't have a one-to-one ratio between the existence of the alleyways where people can access the rear of the yard for parking, with the on-street parking and the park across the street, we are comfortable at least following our own rules of addressing parking, trash, stormwater, and pet waste with this project.
Any other questions from the commission at this time? All right, seeing, no, thank you, Mr. Spatino. We appreciate it. So now, I'm sorry.
Again, I'm just unclear. Do I need to bring Don Bennett in to talk about how our traffic numbers were reduced, or do you need me to rebut anything else?
I'll ask him that. I'll get there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will go into deliberation with the commission. I would like to hear from Mr. Bennett on the traffic situation, the traffic, the, the traffic, how, how the traffic generation is, the existing traffic on 17th Street, and how you feel the traffic will work with this new, new project coming forward.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for the interruption. I slightly misspoke. I want to clarify it for the record, but you may close the public hearing, and now's the appropriate time to do that, but the city will continue to receive those online comments for a period of 24 hours. That way, the commission will be free to proceed with your process and ultimately voting if the commission chooses to do so.
All right, at this time, I will, before Mr. Bennett comes forward, I will physically close the public hearing, and we will now go into deliberation. We would like to hear from Mr. Bennett on the existing traffic and how you see the proposed, the proposed use affecting traffic on 17th Church and that surrounding area. Mr. Bennett?
Okay, I believe Ms. Smith's presentation indicated that overall 24-hour volumes for this site would be lower than what is approved to be built by right at this time, with the exception of the AM peak, and if I am not mistakenly, she said there were five additional trips in the AM peak. What we typically see with residential uses is that you will see more traffic concentrated into the peaks as people go to and come from work during their daily, during their daily activity. Commercial sites will see traffic turnover during the course of the day typically leads to a higher overall volume with little less than the peak, with the exception of some uses. With regard to 17th Street, that is North Carolina Department of Transportation Street, and they've maintained full regulatory control over whatever traffic control is on there, as well as any potential pedestrian crossings. And does that answer your question?
I think in general, yes. I, I am looking at the chart, and I do see that there are five, five additional trips in the, the AM peak hour and about half as many in the PM peak hour. Do you see the trap, that this being a tremendous traffic generator that would create more, worse congestion on the 17th Street or increase of accidents at 17th and Chest, at 17th and Church? And do you have any of those accident numbers at 17th and Church?
We do not currently have any accident numbers at 17th and Church. I do not know if that was researched as part of the application. Additionally, any, any collisions that would have happened in the past week or so would not have made it into the police database at this point.
Okay. Have you had a chance to look at the modifications to the driveway access onto the existing alley off Church Street that Mr. Spatino's site plan proposes? Have you had a chance to look at that?
I have not.
What would you think would be the appropriate width for, we know they're going to be going two-way in and out. I mean, they have to go in and out of that same location. Do you think that this is a 20-foot wide access, 22 feet? What are your thoughts?
I would have to sit down with the city's technical standards to determine what the appropriate width of driveway for that would be.
Okay, but you would not see any, you wouldn't see any reason that if it's, if it's supported in the technical standards, that widening that access for better entrance and exit off Church Street to be allowed?
I think you would be looking at a minimum 20-foot wide driveway for two-way traffic.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I appreciate it. Any other questions from the commission? Mr. Bennett at this time? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I appreciate it. What is the will of the commission at this time? What, what questions or concerns do you, may you still have, or is there anyone that is entertaining a motion at this time? And remember, we do have consistency statements to read this evening, and we also have, if, if in fact it were, it is recommended by staff for conditional approval, and there are 10 conditions that are attached in your staff report. Mr. Bowman, Commissioner Bowman?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve agenda item number one. Request 501, 503, 505, South 17th Street rezoned from UMX CD to UMX CD with a varying design. And that this approval, this request is consistent with the objectives and policy of the following plans adopted by the City of Wilmington. Create comprehensive, create Wilmington comprehensive plan, City of Wilmington strategic plan. Planning Commission considers its approval to be reasonable in the public interest because the proposal is consistent with the recommendation of both the city's strategic plan and Wilmington comprehensive, comprehensive plan is stated. The comprehensive plan supports development and density that enhances the area, and therefore the planning commission recommends approval of this request. I know there are 10 conditions. I don't know that we, we've heard from the applicant yet on his accepting of those 10 conditions, but I would like to elaborate on another condition such that the stormwater parking and driveway modification be compliant with the City of Wilmington technical review.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. One question for staff, Mr. Chambers. My understanding is the addition of that condition is unnecessary due to one of the other conditions that are already in here. Number one, I believe, one or two, and also seven.
All right, well, I'll withdraw that since it's redundant.
Just making sure, Mr. Bowman, I'm not, I'm not saying, or good condition.
The, the conditions as written would require compliance with the technical standards.
Okay.
And that would include stormwater parking in your driveway entrance.
You comfortable with that, Mr. Bowman?
Yes, sir.
All right.
The 10 conditions and if the applicant is accepting of those.
Yes, sir. So at this point, we have a motion on the floor for approval from Commissioner Bowman. I would need a second to that motion. I have a second from Commissioner Lyle, it seems. And now I will run a roll call. Well, first, I will ask Mr. Spatino just to make sure, since it's been, it's been brought up by Commissioner Bowman. Mr. Spatino, are you acceptant of the 10 conditions that are in the staff report?
Yes, staff did a fantastic job and are extremely patient with me, and we are, we are on board with staff's recommendations as written and proposed.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Mr. Chairman, we just have Ms. Lyle verbally confirm her second for the record.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Ms. Lyle, could you verbally confirm?
Jacey Lyle, second.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, so now we'll go through roll call. I appreciate everyone's patience. Commissioner Collier votes I are yes. Commissioner Lyle?
Lyle, yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yay.
Commissioner Sharp?
Sharp, yay.
Commissioner Cortez?
Cortez, yay.
And Commissioner Woodruff?
Woodruff, yay.
Thank you. That, that motion passes modestly seven to, six to zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Spatino for being here, and I appreciate all the public comments that were addressed as well. At this time, we will now bring Mr. Hovis back on to, to the commission. Thank you, sir, for staying in the room. We are going to move on now with item number two on our agenda for tonight. Item number two is also a conditional district rezoning for property containing 3.53 acres on Parson for property containing 3.53 acres on parcel ID R05600-001-007-000, located at 1445 Eastwood Road from CB CD, which is Community Business Conditional District, to CB CD Community, Community Business District to allow for 4,375 square foot car wash. Ms. Nicole Smith will present this for the staff. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Chairman Collier. Next slide. The proposal includes one parcel containing approximately 3.53 acres. The site is located between Town Center Drive and Cavalier Drive. The parcels were annexed effective January 31st, 1999. Next slide. This map provides context and highlights the site location. Next slide. This slide provides the existing conditions of the site. The top images are of the vacant site viewed from Lidl and from Eastwood Road. The bottom two images are looking east and west on Eastwood Road. Next slide. These images are of the adjacent land uses. The top left image is of multifamily homes located north of the site. The top right image is of the grocer located south of the site. The bottom left image is of the Mayfair entrance located west of the site. The bottom right image captures single-family dwellings located east of the request across Eastwood Road. Next slide. On October 6th, 2015, City Council approved a rezoning of one parcel totaling 8.11 acres from R15 Residential District to Community Business Conditional District to allow 36,000 square feet of grocery and a two-story 20,400 square foot office and retail building. Following the rezoning in 2014, excuse me, 15, the parcel was subdivided and conveyed. Next slide. The applicant is proposing to rezone 3.53 acres from Community Business Conditional District to Community Business Conditional District to allow for 4,375 square feet of automotive services, a car wash. The parcel under consideration for this conditional district was originally approved for a two-story 20,400 square foot office and retail building. Next slide. On your screen is the elevation proposed by the applicant viewed from Eastwood Road. Next slide. The site is located within a greenfield site area of opportunity as identified on the Comprehensive Plan Growth Strategies map. The plan encourages connections to adjacent areas and incorporate them into new development, as well as encourage a variety of building types, employ new and traditional urban design principles in site and building design. The proposed car wash use provides a service to citizens within an interconnected commercial development and is located within a high-density transition area of opportunity. The use is compatible with Mayfair to the north and west and grocery retailer to the east. The single-family homes in the area are located across Eastwood Road, a four-lane major corridor. Staff believes the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan and the city's adopted focus areas. Staff believes the request is reasonable and in the public interest and recommends conditional approval with the conditions outlined in the case summary. That concludes staff's presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, we appreciate that again. Are there questions from the commission for Ms. Smith at this time? Okay, seeing none, I think the applicant is here, which is Ms. Amy Schaefer, and is prepared for presentation. Ms. Schaefer?
Sorry, Dave's a little taller than I am, even if he's. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Amy Schaefer from Lee Case here representing Arundel Holdings for the rezoning request for 1445 Eastwood Road. I want you to all take a look at this picture from, from our presentation. The picture that Ms. Smith had, well, accurate, is an illustration that we worked through to show that we were complying with the code. And our client worked extensively with the urban designer and, and other planners on the building design. This is what you're going to see on, on the, on the site. So just wanted to, to be clear about that. Next slide. You can go through this one pretty quickly if, if you want, we'll get to the next slide. I've got a short timeframe. Here's a, a picture of, of the property with the Lidl, the Lidl is there now. And the star is, is where we plan on putting our car wash if the rezoning is approved. Next slide. And the project history, Ms. Smith went through this, so I don't need to go through the property history again. This is the current zoning. We wanted to show that the single-family residential, as Ms. Smith stated, is across the street, across Eastwood Road. We will be connecting to the Lidl, so there will not be a curb cut onto Eastwood Road from our project. Next slide. Here's the site plan that shows a little bit more accurately. There's a stream going through, so we will be set back from, from Eastwood Road quite a bit. There's vegetation that, of course, we will not be able to remove. We will be connecting to the Lidl, and all access will be off of Cavalier Drive. We have an existing easement agreement with, with that property for the, the entrance and exit to the car wash. Next slide. And I, I think this is something that I don't see often. We're decreasing pretty much every aspect of, of the previous requests. As you can see, it was a two-story office and retail, we're asking for a one-story building. We went from over 20,000 square feet to under 5,000. We're moving the buildings from the rear property line, which is that, that multifamily use, quite a distance. And the trip generation has decreased significantly. The prior rezoning request was part of the Lidl when it came in. It's important to staff to have interconnectivity. Because this parcel was set in the back, wanted to make sure there was some kind of comprehensive plan for it. More than five years ago, that, that was brought through. The office and retail just isn't working. We do have an end user for this rezoning request. We would ask the, the planning commission to recommend approval with the conditions, and we're happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schaefer, we appreciate that. Commission, are there questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Ms. Schaefer.
Thank you.
Now open the public hearing, and I will ask if there is anyone in the convention center that would like to speak in favor of the Eastwood Road project item number two. All right, seeing none, we will move on with anyone in the convention center that is opposed to item number two, the Eastwood Road project. Okay, it seems that there is, there is not anyone in attendance in either favor or opposition. So I will read the, the, the one comment we had on this particular issue. And I apologize, I hole punched very poorly, so I cannot read this, this person's name. Matthew Viler, or Viler, I think is his name. I would like to speak out against the rezoning for 1445 Eastwood Road. A car wash is not something that is needed in this area, nor does it mesh with the existing and proposed infrastructure. I believe the current zoning for office retail space is needed and should stay. With May, Mayfair behind it, Lidl, Lidl adjacent to the property and the center point coming, it will blend well with what is already in the area. Furthermore, I do not believe the initial rezoning in 2015 for the entire property would have been approved with a car wash. So I have no idea why rezoning a portion of it now will. I would also like to see Mr. Swain stick to what he has already, already have approved, rather, instead of playing shady politics of proposing something that neighbors are on board with only to go back on their word and change plans when they find something that makes them more money without talking to the, taking the neighbors into account. Yes, I'm also talking about the upcoming rezoning request and special use permit to extend the height of several buildings within center point in parentheses. But I do, I digress. This is a, this is a different issue for a different day. The fact remains, though, though, that a car wash is not something that is needed and wanted, and it does not blend well with the surrounding area. Plus, in five to 10 years, once Eastwood Road Military Cutoff Overpass is built and Eastwood becomes more of a highway, no one will be willing to pull off the road for a car wash. I hope that you will listen to desires of the people living in the area where these rezoning requests are taking place. Please try to empathize with us. Would you want these things in your backyard? Thank you. And that is the only, only one I had in opposition or comment posted on the website. So at this point, we will close the public hearing. I will ask Ms. Schaefer if she doesn't mind coming back to the podium just to make sure there's not any additional questions or concerns that need to be discussed. Thank you, ma'am, how are you this evening? I hope all is well with everyone.
Thank you, yes, we're, we're doing well, how about y'all?
We are very well in here, thank you very much.
Thank you, we've got plenty of space, we're doing good.
Planning Commission members, are there questions for Ms. Schaefer at this time or for staff? Mr. Bowman, it seems you have a question?
Yes, Ms. Schaefer, the image that is on the screen at the moment appears to show the wooded area on either creek bank to be, to remain wooded and sort of a thick visual screen from Eastwood Road. However, your application packet has a site plan that shows sort of a cleaned-up roadside planted area, and then your 3D from that shows sort of a, only pines still standing. Can you speak to that point about the landscaping along the roadway that would remain? That's not part of the development?
Certainly, the site plan that, that was presented in the staff report that we presented with our application that shows a few pine trees, that was so that you could see the building. There were some requirements about filtration and, and other aspects of, of the building that were required to meet the code. So that was why that was included in the site plan application. Then you have the pretty site plan that has the drawing and, and the color that is including in the Lidl, that, that one. That's just showing, no, now we're going back again. But, but that one, that's showing the, the larger trees that, that will be there. And I'm going to double check, but I don't think we intend to really take out any of the buffer area if we can help it. We'd like to keep the buffer area untouched if, if possible. So we don't, we don't plan on taking anything out on the other side of the, the stream if we can help it.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer, one more thing. Though at first glance, it seemed a little counterintuitive that a car-centered business would have way less traffic. But I think that's measured at peak times and your, I guess, traffic standards, do they have most car wash traffic occurring other than peak hours? Can you explain that?
So the traffic engineers did that, and they are not here. We tried to limit our staff that, that was present. So if you could just give me one second so that I can double check on that answer for you, but I, I don't want to misspeak.
Okay.
You're exactly right, they're typically non-peak trips in addition to the capture that, that's being done from people who are already going different places and, and stop to get their car washed.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman, I appreciate that. Ms. Schaefer, it looks like on the, the site plans that you're, you are providing access a walkway from your project out to Eastwood Road to the sidewalk along Eastwood Road, is that correct?
Yes, that was a recommendation of, of planning staff and my, my clients complying. We are not sure of the technical details yet of crossing the stream. But that, that was a request, and that is something that, that we've agreed to do as, as a condition for staff.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Other questions for Ms. Schaefer at this time or for staff? Okay, thank you, Ms. Schaefer, we appreciate it.
Thank you, and just to clarify with the conditions, number five does say a car wash and, and landscaping. I do want to be clear that we also have a vacuum center. So just wanted to make sure that that was included as, as well, the vacuum area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, what is the will of the commission at this time? Is there questions, deliberations? Is there a motion on the floor for item number two?
Yes, this is Jeff Hovis regarding agenda item number two, case CD-16-520. I would ask for approval of this request as consistent with the objectives and policies of the following plans adopted by the City of Wilmington. Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, the City of Wilmington Strategic Plan. The planning commission considers its approval to be reasonable in the public interest because the proposal is consistent with the recommendations of both the city's strategic plan and Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan. The proposed use provides a service to citizens within an interconnected commercial development and is located within a high-density transit, transition area of opportunity. Therefore, the planning commission recommends approval of this request. I would add that we add staff's report recommendation of 13 items and then modify number five to incorporate vacuum center, so there's no, at this time. That's my, would be my.
Okay, motion. Thank you, Commissioner Hovis, we have a, a motion for approval with the provided 13 conditions. And Mr. Hovis is proposing to amend condition number 15. I'm sorry, I'm, excuse me. Amend number five to add vacuum center also to the end of that, that sentence. Is everyone clear on what the motion is? Okay, do I have a second to that motion? I have a second by Commissioner Woodruff, I will need you to verbalize that, please.
Woodruff, I second.
All right, we have a motion for approval and a second. Is there any additional questions on the item? Yeah, we'll call the roll, and we will answer yea or nay. Collier, yes. Commissioner Hovis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyle?
Lyle, yay.
Commissioner Bowman?
Mr. Chairman, has the applicant accepted the conditions?
She did.
Okay, I, for me?
Thank you. Commissioner Sharp?
Sharp, yay.
Commissioner Cortez?
Cortez, yay.
And Commissioner Woodruff?
Woodruff, yay.
All right, that's unanimous vote, seven to zero. Thank you very much, we appreciate the applicant being here and any of the, any of the comments made by the public. Thank you very much. We will continue tonight's agenda and move on to item number three. Item number three is a conditional district rezoning, property containing 10.73 acres. It's located at 321 Hooker Road to rezone from R15 Residential District to R7 CD, which is Conditional District, for 56 lot, single-family residential planned unit development. And Brian Chambers will be ours, will provide the staff report. Mr. Chambers?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Next slide.
Chambers, it's hard for me to hear you, so I don't know if they can hear you.
Is this, uh, can we adjust the mic, please? Can you hear me now?
I can hear you better, yes.
Okay. This site is located on the south side of Hooker Road between Teal Street and Woodland Forest Court. It's approximately 11 acres. It's approximately eleven acres in size and currently contains a manufactured housing park. Next slide, please. This map shows the site within the context of surrounding area. Uh, you can see UNCW located to the west and Bradley Creek to the east. Next slide. Here are some photos of the subject site as you look from Hooker Road. Next slide. And here are some photos of the adjacent properties. Uh, you can see the single-family, um, dwellings that are, either on either side across the street in the adjacent neighborhood. Next slide, please. Uh, the site is part of a nineteen ninety-five annexation area, was assigned R fifteen zoning at that time. Uh, prior to annexation, this site was owned R fifteen in the county. According to county tax records, the manufactured housing park has been in existence since nineteen sixty-eight. The existing park is considered a legal non-conforming use and may continue to operate unless all of the units are removed for a period of a hundred and eighty days. On January ninth of twenty nineteen, the planning commission recommended denial of a request to rezone this site to MFL, multi-family low-density for one hundred and six townhome units. On May first of twenty nineteen, the planning commission recommended denial of a request to rezone this site to R five C residential conditional district for eighty-six lot, single-family planned unit development. Uh, the applicant appealed that denial to city council and ultimately withdrew that at city council's July sixteenth, twenty nineteen meeting. The applicant proposes to rezone the site from R fifteen residential to R seven residential conditional district now for a fifty-six lot, single-family development with private rights away, open space, and stormwater facilities. The applicant has also requested a special use permit for a planned unit development. The planned unit development allows for greater design flexibility for development than what is possible under the general district regulations. Next slide, please. The proposal includes fifty-six residential lots, a new private street network, and open space. Traffic data indicates that the proposal would result in an increase in the estimated vehicle trips generated on the site. However, the proposed intensity does not require a traffic impact analysis. Access would be provided by two roadway connections to Hooker Road and an additional connection to Ivy Stone Court located to the southeast. The site is located on watershed resource protection area and must meet standards for exceptional design for the proposed and previous coverage. And an eight to ten, eight to ten-foot wide multi-use path would be required along the Hooker Road frontage. Next slide, please. Uh, here are some elevations of, of some examples of what the homes might look like in this, uh, neighborhood, uh, as provided by the applicant. Next slide, please. The Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan calls for compatible infill and redevelopment with an existing residential neighborhoods. The site currently contains a legal, non-conforming manufactured housing park, which is intended to be phased out when the site redevelops. The site is located within an established low-density, single-family neighborhood. A conventional, single-family subdivision, East Wind, is located to the west of the site. In a performance residential subdivision, Southern Oaks at Bradley Creek is located to the south. Both of these subdivisions were plotted and developed while in the county jurisdiction. Uh, if the planning commission elects to recommend approval of this rezoning staff, does suggest that the, the conditions included in the case summary be applied. I'll be happy to answer your questions you might have, and the applicant is present and is prepared to make a presentation as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chambers. We appreciate your time this evening and, and bringing that forward. Are there questions from the commission at this time for Mr. Chambers? Mr. Woodruff?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chambers, just only because I don't know, what would be the density if they wanted to develop that property as single-family under R fifteen, which it presently is, as I understand?
Uh, R fifteen, I believe, is, uh, two point two units per acre, so roughly twenty-four, twenty-five units.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions from the commission? Thank you, Mr. Chambers, I appreciate that. Uh, the, as I understand, the applicant is here and is ready for a presentation.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, and, yes, we can, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Suzanne O'Brien, and I am the applicant for this rezoning request. Uh, Brian's presentation, I think, hit most of the high points. Uh, I'd like to bribe just a little more background and maybe a little bit more detail for you and take questions. Uh, next slide, please.
One moment, Ms. Bryant, they're making sure your presentation is queued up. As you can imagine, they're having a very busy evening with
No problem.
And the likes, so. All right, there we go.
While we're waiting, it is a, as Brian said, three twenty-one Hooker Road is, is currently operating as a sixty-nine lot mobile home park. Uh, it, yep, there you go, you can just stop there, thank you. Um, the trailers vary in age from twenty to forty years old, and they offer anywhere from two to four bedrooms. Next slide. Uh, as you know, this site has gone through two previous zoning requests, uh, as Brian discussed, both of which were denied, and both of which were very different proposals than what we're discussing now. Uh, I'm confident that what we're bringing before you now is, uh, a plan that is both consistent with the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan and also in line with what the adjacent neighbors have asked for. Um, as you know, this came under severe scrutiny, uh, both, both previous times, and it became clear to us that the neighbors would support nothing less than a single-family for-sale product. So that is what, uh, I have brought to you now. Next slide, please. The fifty-six lot, single-family site plan before you offers sidewalks, it offers both active and passive open spaces. Uh, it, it does offer a connection to the adjacent neighborhood, which I know is something that was discussed before, but is also, uh, something that is out of our control. Um, the R seven, as Brian said, gives us a, a little bit greater design flexibility, uh, not just a special use, to put the type of house that we are accustomed to building on these lots and situate them in a way that makes sense for lots that are all shaped a little bit differently. Um, the, let's see, sorry. The sidewalks and plazas create a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood. This is something that the adjacent neighbors, uh, have also cued into and said that they appreciate. Uh, it's surrounded by a twenty-foot buffer and clusters of hardwoods will be preserved throughout the site. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this offers a, a better elevation rendering of the cottages that we proposed to build. This is a product that we've built before, uh, with success. It's a product that we knew works and really works beautifully on smaller lots. Uh, these are three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath cottages with two-car garages, front porches, rear-screened porches, uh, and fit really nicely with the surrounding neighborhoods in the area. Uh, next slide. Uh, and this is important, I think, to note, w- we did hold two community meetings. Uh, the ones in the past have been hotly contested. We've had up to eighty-five people at these meetings in the past. Uh, on March eighteenth, which happened to be the same day that the library closed, we did hold one at the library and we did have one person in attendance. And, uh, a little bit later in April, I sent out a letter again to the adjacents. I offered my personal cell phone number and my email address. I heard from four people, and then I held a virtual meeting on April thirtieth in which six adjacent neighbors were in attendance. The feedback was overwhelmingly positive. Uh, they thanked me for bringing forward a single-family for-sale product that was incompatible design with the neighborhood's surrounding. Uh, we, we did talk about, about a lot of other things, um, all of which ended up being very positive. Additionally, I spent about a, an hour on-site last week with some of the adjacent neighbors discussing trees, buffers, um, their concerns and how we might work together to be good neighbors. And I think we all came away from that meeting feeling like we would work really well together, uh, so much so that, uh, some very vocal naysayers in the past, uh, I believe, are here tonight to speak in support and perhaps have emailed you as well. And I am available for questions now or can come back after we hear from other people.
Thank you very much, Ms. O'Brien, we appreciate your presentation. I think we will wait and address questions to you directly after we hear from, uh, those in favor and in opposition, so we don't limit the time.
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we will open, uh, the public hearing, and I would ask for anyone that's in favor of the proposal here in the convention center to please come forward. Ready? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Keenan, I live at sixty-two oh one Sugar Pine Drive, um, in Wilmington. I work for BBNT, I do construction loans for, for builders and developers. I helped, um, Howard and Suzanne with the Shinwood West Project off of Greenbale Loop Road, um, several years ago, which is, um, a very familiar project, what this one's gonna be. Basically about the same dis, density, the same quality of houses. Um, they did a very good job on that project. It was very well accepted by the market. Um, that product was very well needed by, by the market. Um, I understand Howard is retired now, and, um, I'm fully confident that Suzanne will be able to continue with the project in a high-quality manner. Um, I think it'll enhance, certainly enhance the existing property. Um, it'll enhance the neighborhood, um, I think is in complete harmony with, um, the Southern Oaks, uh, the, development as well as the, um, the title, title reach project across the street. If the project is approved, um, the property will now have stormwater management, um, a plan in place as now, it's just completely runs off because the management plan was in place back then. Um, and, um, uh, the only negative that I, that I saw in the report was, uh, the, the traffic study, and, um, I completely don't understand how sixty-nine two-and-four-bedroom mobile home units cause less traffic than fifty-six single-family detached houses. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Are there others in attendance?
Gentlemen, ladies, I rep, uh, my name is Craig Reeland. I represent the Martha K. Reeland Revocable Trust, which is located at seven zero two Woodland Forest Court on the southwest corner of Ivy Stone Court and Woodland Forest Court. I'm here to speak in favor of this proposal. It's, uh, it's been about time that, uh, we move forward with this in a manner which is in keeping with the greater residential, um, atmosphere and that, uh, the proposal as proposed now is of the size and nature of most of the residential stuff and certainly, certainly in keeping with the property to the east, which is the Southern Oaks at Bradley Creek Development. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reeland. Are there any others? We have just a couple of minutes, we're pausing the time while, uh, the microphone is being, cleaned for the, cleaned and serviced for the next speaker.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Um, I would like to make one correction. I misspoke earlier to Mr. Woodruff's question about density as proposed, um, that would be allowed under current zoning. Um, that would actually be thirty-one units. I had a chance to look at my, my notes, my case summary. I just wanted to make that correction so there wasn't any misinformation out there. And, um, to, to the previous, uh, speakers', um, point to show that the, the staff did identify a smaller trip generation for sixty-nine mobile homes versus the fifty-six proposed single-family lots. Um, I did reach out to our, um, traffic folks and, um, with that question, uh, myself, and, um, you know, I want to reiterate, these are estimates, and they are, they are using a manual that provides numbers that are based on data from across the country. Um, sometimes they don't make, uh, a whole lot of sense, uh, on us, on certain scales. Um, but I just wanted to point that out, that we did inquire, and that's, we're using the numbers, and it's, again, it's, it's just an estimate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers, appreciate your clarifications. Is there anyone else, uh, in attendance that would like to speak in favor of item Okay, seeing none, we will move on with, uh, anyone who is in attendance that would like to speak in opposition of item number three. If you would, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Carl Alge, I live at sixty-two fourteen Teal Street, which is right around the corner from the mobile home park. Um, every one in the neighborhood wants to see the, um, area redeveloped, just a disgrace what it looks like this, I drove through there not long ago, there's only ten have mobile homes that were inhabited at the time. But what we need to look at is, if you are a developer and you divide, buy a piece of property, you can't just go around every time you buy a piece of property in our town and accept it to be rezoned the way you want it with no consideration for the neighborhood. If you buy something, you're taking a, a gamble or a risk, and it shouldn't be that, uh, you get, you know, rubber stamped every time you propose a change. It seem like every time somebody wants to do something, we're supposed to say, well, yeah, you bought the property and, you know, this isn't what the neighbors want, but we're gonna change it for you. It's, it's got to stop. The two people that just spoke don't even live in the neighborhood. One guy's a banker, and he, you know, of course, he's gonna want the thing developed so he can give the, lend the people the money and make money. All we're asking for is to develop it the way it's zoned, and it's pretty simple to do. If you can do thirty, some units didn't do thirty. It's, you know, we gotta stop this, people buying lots that, and then turn around expecting them to be rezoned for their profit. It's just gotta, it's gotta stop sometime. I don't really eject so much to the, what they're wanting to do, but I, you know, there's no character in those houses at all, what they're showing has zero character to me. Um, but, you know, we, there's gotta be a point in time where we just gotta say, look, you, you bought the property, and if you don't, if you can't do it the way it's zoned, then too bad. You know, you, 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 you took a gamble, you spent your money, and if you can't accept the, the rules of the law, then you shouldn't have bought the property. You know, it's just got to be, you know, every time you look at the news or whatever, and, um, people speak against it, but it seems like it always gets approved because we, you know, we're supposed to be, feel sorry for the developer. And that, I think the lady actually speaking is not actually the owner of the company. When we went to the first meeting, um, I can't remember the man's name or name of the company, but I do not think that the lady speaking right now is the owner of the company. Maybe she is, but I don't think she is. She might want to clarify that. Um, but there's gotta be a point in time where people can't buy a piece of property and then come to you guys and say, we want to rezone it, you know, just so we can make more money. Um, you know, and I don't, really don't think that, or she might want to name the six people she says she talked to. Um, I know there's, the sign just went up last week about this meeting, so, um, I don't know how many people she's talked to or notified. Um, but there just comes, there's gotta be a, a point in time where developers have got to, when they buy a piece of property, they need to develop it the way it's it the way it's, the way it's supposed to be done. You know, the man who just did the little thing uptown, nobody in that neighborhood wants that, but you guys just approved it. And there's, you know, so I'm not going to get into that one, but, you know, y'all just went against the will of the neighborhood for a developer again. So, when is, when is it going to stop? You know? I don't know, but let's just stop it tonight. These people have been, they're not getting the message, obviously. When you get turned down twice, you know, you're not getting the message. So, all you got to do is build it as it's zoned. Nobody wants that there anymore, but, you know, let's do it right. You know, that's all we're asking. Nobody, I have nothing against these people, but there's got to be a point in time where if you're, the planning commission is responsibility to the community to do what's right for the community and not what's right for the developers. I mean, it's just, it's just, people are sick of it. And everything people talk about in this town is, you know, they get what they want because they got the money. And, you know, when is it going to stop? Say, "Let's make it stop tonight. Tell these people to build it like it's supposed to be built, and let's quit rezoning pieces of property." And I appreciate your time. Let's do the right thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. G. I appreciate your comments this evening. All right, looks like we do not have anyone else signed up at this point to speak in opposition, so everyone's been given a chance and an opportunity. We will close the public hearing at this time. I will read into the record the comments that we received from the online. From online, there are quite a few of them. They are not, they're not all that long, so hopefully it won't take as long to read through, but we will put them in for the record. This is from Ms. Bammett. For the meeting later today, we highly disapprove of the fir-, we highly disapprove of the first proposal submitted, but for this particular plan, it does seem better aligned with the rest of the neighborhood communities. Thank you. Judith Gilbert, Colberth, excuse me, says, "So happy with the new plan submitted. It fits into our neighborhood much better than what Pinton was submitting originally." This is from David Cummings. "Love the potential of the new project. Glad Suzanne is on board. As I have worked with her in the past, she is great to work with, too, with professional, great to work with professionally, and will have a win-win situation for everyone in mind. Highlights of what I love about the project are that they are going to be for sale, and that is very important to the Hookah Road community. Also, the renderings look very nice, and the homes range from 2,000 to 2,500 square feet, which is a nice size. I also like all the open space they have created and planned for the neighborhood, and I believe that is very important. This is a big difference from the 80 to 100-plus rentals proposed the previous times, so I appreciate their effort." This is an email from Brittany German to Ms. Amy Bradshaw with the city. "Hope you're having a good day. Below is a written statement for the public comment portion of the hearing scheduled for tonight. This is for item 3, 32321 Hookah Road. I tried to submit using the public comment form on the website, but every time I submitted, I received an error message. We were planning on attending to make our statements in person, but we want to be respectful of the procedures in place, so we are hoping our comments will still be read aloud tonight and put into the record. Would you please confirm that they are, we have received them and they are in the record?" Yes, Ms. German, they are being read into the record, and I will complete those now. "This request is drastic, is drastic in nature, and will have a drastic and lasting effect on the surrounding areas. The history of past rezoning requests and appeals indicate the owner's primary goal is to fit in as many units as they can get away with. They're clearly not concerned with the character of the established neighborhoods or environmental preservation as they advertise. Should we maximize profit for one over the rights of the others, and it's imperative to protect our natural resources? The proposal is requesting the following dramatic changes, drastic changes, excuse me. One, increasing the allowable density from 2.9 dwelling units per acre to 6.2. Two, covering approximately 52% of the site with impervious surface. That equates to more than 5.5 acres being covered. This is within a watershed protection area. Three, effectively a 600% increase to the current traffic volumes. In parentheses, 20 divided by 69 mobile home units occupied equals 29%. So, actual volume is akin to 99 trips, i.e. 29% of the estimated 345 at full capacity in parentheses. And this proposal would bring it up to 610 trips. Four, the proposal includes references to, references to preservation of trees and eco-friendly design, but we all know this is greenwashing, folks. To achieve the high-density returns they are seeking, they propose to remove nine oak trees, seven of which are greater than 15 inches in diameter, and one of which is a grand oak. They are also asking to remove many other long-living ecosystem-serving, ecosystem-service providing, can't really be replaced specimens, including an 18-inch sycamore, an 18-inch hickory, a 20-inch, 24-inch poplar, as well as 90 pine trees, the vast majority of which are greater than 15 inches in diameter, going up to as large as 35. Number five, similarly, the proposal includes a huge, includes a lot of language around bike paths, pedestrian and trail connections, and traffic calming measures. This just sounds like more greenwashing, and is frankly, and frankly is irrelevant to the proposal. The multimodal plan along Hookah Road is already part of the City of Wilmington's plan and is already funded with or without this project. This has nothing to do with the proposed development. Moreover, this proposal, from what is available publicly, does not appear to truly adhere to several requirements outlined from the city code. From Section 18-543, the proposal does not specify how it meets the baseline prerequisites for qualifying as an exceptionally designed project. For example, the code states, "Site assessment, a detailed natural resource inventory and assessment shall be prepared before this conceptual site plan is developed to identify and prioritize the natural resources requiring management through project planning. Was this site assessment done prior to the conceptual being developed so it would, so it would guide this design decisions? I do not see any indication of this included in the proposal." From Section 18-544, where on the site plan is the 100-foot buffer for which the proposal is seeking a credit of 30 points as an exceptionally designed project. Are there even any 404 wetlands or other identified conservation resources on this site? How can they measure 100 feet away then? Note, they are claiming this buffer in order to develop 51.8%, not the permitted 25% with impervious surfaces, and to increase the dwelling unit density from six, increase the dwelling unit density to 6.2 dwelling units per acre, not the permitted 2.9. From Section 18-294, planned unit development, residential PUDR are available in all residential districts provided that the density does not exceed the density level permitted in the residential district in which the PUD-R is located. This indicates that a PUD-R approval for this lot should be based on the requirements of R15. The proposer is basing this on R7, which it is not. Why wouldn't the owner simply develop this property within the rules? It could be done to, it could be done similar to adjacent neighborhoods, which also feature low-country architecture, walkable communities, and other trendy real estate catchphrases. Those developers managed to follow the rules of the existing zoning standards. Why can't this one? I applaud the planning commission for upholding our protections to this, in this developer's previous proposals and appeals, and I hope you would do the same now. There is nothing stopping them from developing their land in adherence with the rules we all agreed to when we bought our properties here. What draws people to Wilmington is the natural beauty, the trees, the marshes, and the relaxed environment. The codes are in place to protect that, and sustainable development is possible, but it is not what it looks like. Rather, this is an example of someone chasing a higher profit for themselves without regard to the bigger picture. Otherwise, shouldn't there be, be a more concrete, shouldn't there be a more concrete justifiable reason for this rezoning? The request for making such dramatic exceptions to the rules has not been articulated in a justifiable, a justifiable way." This is from, also from Brittany German. I think one of her comments did go through, "Looks like it's proposing to develop this area to be even denser than the most dense neighborhood in the vicinity, and in a special concern area immediately adjacent to the already polluted and overdeveloped Bradley Creek. Development and density standards in this area need to be strictly enforced as they are not relaxed and changed. Such standards have been, have shown a pattern of becoming stricter over time. This proposal is in conflict with that pattern." This is from Elliot Glick. "I am in full support of the most updated plans for the new development, as long as the city is considering the following support to offset the amount of traffic added to Hookah Road. Widening of Hookah Road, adding a bike lane to connect the city trail from Hookah Road to the bike lane on Riceville Avenue, connecting the sidewalk from Southern Oaks, the adjacent community, and adding a turn lane to Hookah Road where it runs into Riceville Avenue. Possible traffic light may be necessary in years to come, depending on traffic flow." This is from Barbara Glover. "Driving past the property on my way to the supermarket, I noticed the sign of a public meeting scheduled for this week. I am concerned that I will have to face a decision of to risk health, to risk health issues to attend a public meeting to gain information on what is being currently planned and being able to express concerns about the impact this development would have on my neighborhood." This is an email from Johnny Harris to Ms. Amy Bradshaw. "Amy, this submission portal kicked back and aired, so I'm sent, errant, error message, so I'm sending you this as a second line to make sure my thoughts are brought into the statement. The proposed building is illegal inside of R15. The proposed build contradicts the city's efforts to conserve Wilmington's natural resources. I am not going to ask permission to rob a bank because the city of Wilmington envisions higher-income houses. For the rule, follow the rules. The reference to attachment be consistencies with the city policy and plans when compared to conforming R15 residential development and infill. The proposed R7 PUDR and subsequent cottages at Bradley Creek explicitly deviate from every cited excerpt that is relevant. Example, 6.3.1 urban forest. Tree preservation should be a priority in development, where significant clusters of trees can be protected for meaningful impact and appearance. The literature in the application shows that the proposed build, the proposed build saves trees, but compared to an R15 compliant redevelopment, it drastically deviates from the envisioned city plan. If the cottages at Bradley Creek cannot be designed and redeveloped within the R15 guidelines, it does not adhere to the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan guidance that any approved redevelopment should be compatible with the existing residential neighborhood. All adjacent and proximal neighborhoods Kensington Place, Southern Oaks, East Wind, Title Reach were developed in accordance to the proper R15 guidelines. Has there been a traffic study or considerations to the intersection of Hookah Road at Riceville Avenue? This intersection backs up during peak travel times. Cars approach that intersection at 45 miles per hour from the left and right. This application gives no consideration to the effects a high-density subdivision would have on Hookah Road at Riceville Avenue. Approving this request would ensure the need of improvements of this intersection, where the cars already back up on Hookah Road during peak hours. Please do not, please do not request approval of this plan, low-country Charleston-style, high-density homes in an R15 neighborhood. It's not only illegal, it does not preserve the character of the established neighborhood. This property can clearly be redeveloped, adhering to R15 guidelines, evidenced with several adjacent communities and subdivisions." From Ryan, Ryan Eng, I think. "New plan is much better and fits in with the single-family homes, non-rentals of the surrounding community." Michael Ingram. Think that says, "So are these rental units?" Question mark. Sheila Ingram. "I am very disappointed and concerned that this meeting is going forward on May 6. Both my husband and I have been very involved in the request for rezoning for 321 Hookah Road and have been in attendance for all previous meetings. Our residence is in a neighborhood off Hookah Road. We are both over 65 and have medical issues that would make, would make us at risk for complications if exposed to the virus, as there, as are many of our neighbors, neighbors. Given that Governor Cooper's stay-at-home order is effective through May the 8, having this meeting is unsafe and putting public at risk, even with the precautions you are planning. I would respectfully request that this meeting be continued until a later date to allow citizens like myself, my husband, and others at risk to be present and represented. Thank you for your consideration of this request." Greg Reed. "I want to express my support for the current plan. I was adamantly against the two previous proposals. This, unlike the others, promotes homeownership in an area of the same. Often, these projects seem to consider only the developer and new potential residents while ignoring the established homeowners, who for the most, who for the most part made, who for most made the largest investment of their lives in their home. This is not a location for rental apartments, which is basically what both previous proposals were. Suzanne O'Brien, project coordinator, explained to all the, to all at the community meeting at the, that these three-bedroom homes with garages are all for sale, which is in line with the surrounding neighborhoods. As this proposal does not have a road connection to my neighborhood, Southern Oaks, excuse me, as this proposal does have a road connection to my neighborhood, Southern Oaks, I would like to see a couple of speed bumps installed on Ivy Stone Court to slow the traffic between the two neighborhoods. In conclusion, provided this proposal, if approved, doesn't get changed after the fact to something not resembling what was approved, I'm requesting that the planning commission approve the rezoning from R15 to R7." Martin Reeland, Martha Reeland, excuse me. "I am in full support of the proposed rezoning and conditional use PUD as proposed by the developer for the property known as 321 Hookah Road." Bob and Diana Rohan. "We are very pleased about the idea of homes to be built for sale in this space. We are very much against homes to be built for rent." John Schulse. His comment is, "What is the plan?" This is an email that was sent to myself and the mayor from Ms. Cynthia Simpson, and it was, and the following one was sent from, I think, Ms. Simpson's husband. "To the members of the planning commission, my husband and I have sent emails to the mayor and the chair of the planning commission to request the discussion of this disposition of property at 321 Hookah Road, Wilmington, North Carolina, currently operating as a mobile home park be moved to a later date. The request for rezoning and opportunity for a special use permit have not been favorably received by Wilmington citizens who live in that neighborhood. It seems extremely unfair to hold this discussion when the state of North Carolina is under an executive order that requires people in North Carolina to remain in their homes except for essential business. The order also specifies that there are certain citizens who are at, who are more at risk for contracting the coronavirus and suffering serious health results if that happens. Many of the people in this neighborhood who have come to previous meetings to voice their opinions regarding rezoning are in that age group and should not attend a meeting. In addition, the solidarity shown by people who care about the density on Hookah Road will not be apparent, because even those who are able to attend will not be allowed to be together. Please consider this plea to change the date for the hearing. If you will not, please take this message, please take this message as a complete opposition to what is being proposed. The zoning, as it was promised in, the zoning, as it was promised to this area, it is not a place with road structure, with road structures that can accommodate many additional homes." This is, this is from Tom and Cindy Simpson. And I believe that is the last one I have. Mr. Attorney, is that the last you have in your stack as well? This is from Catherine Suggs. I think this is for a different one. No problem at all. Thank you. All right, so that is the end of the public comment that were brought forward from the website. So thank you all for listening to me labor on reading through those, but we do appreciate all those comments, and we wanted to make sure that all of them were read into the record for the folks that took the time to go online and post their comments and to email their comments in. So we do greatly appreciate those, and all of those have been heard and read. So at this time, I will close. I cannot close the public hearing. I have one more person that we did not pick up earlier when we needed public comments, so I'm going to allow this one last comment. Brian, one second. He's gone out to make sure she's coming to the podium. Okay, I've been instructed that we will not be having this lady join us at this time. We appreciate everyone's comments, though. And at this time, I would like for Ms. O'Brien to come back up to the podium, please, as I'm quite certain that we may have some questions for you and your proposal.
Hello.
Hi. Thank you for being here, and we appreciate your patience, too. Members of the commission, what questions do you have for the applicant and/or staff at this time?
May I have an opportunity just to rebut some of those comments or answer some of the questions that were brought up in those comments?
I think that would be acceptable. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Carlisle, the person at 6214 Teal. I do agree with him. It is currently a disgraceful-looking site, and I do aim to change that. He said that the two people who spoke in support, that neither of them lived in the neighborhood. Mr. Craig Reland indeed does live in the neighborhood. He is an adjacent neighbor. He actually is directly adjacent to and shares a lot line with the site, and he was in support. Carlisle said that we've given no consideration to this rezoning. I assure you, we've given a tremendous amount of consideration, several years' worth, actually, if you look back at the first rezoning request. This certainly isn't a rubber-stamp situation. We clearly weren't approved the first two times, and this was brought back with considerable improvements after listening to staff and neighbors. He asked who was notified. The 63 adjacent neighbors were notified twice, and the six people who came are on record with the clerk of court, as was indicated in the packet. I do appreciate all the positive comments that we got. I think it was Ms. German who indicated there's a 600% increase in traffic. I think Brian spoke to that briefly, that he was using the ITE in the trip generation manual, which really just speaks to generalities. That was really an assumption, and I think we can all agree that a 69-lot mobile home park that at the very least would have three bedrooms, that's 207 bedrooms, that's considerably more than the 56 lots that I'm proposing that would give us 168 bedrooms. Those trailer parks could be four bedrooms. That would be more. And when we speak to these generalities, I think anybody could drive by there tomorrow and see the number of cars in front of each trailer there, and I think we could all agree that there are a lot more trips being generated from a 69-lot trailer park than a 56-lot three-bedroom, single-family. There's been a lot of talk about traffic. Obviously, we didn't have to do a traffic impact analysis. Hooker Road is operating at a level Service A, and I think that I saw in the staff report, and someone can confirm if they'd like, that it's operating for somewhere upwards of 9,000 trips a day that it can handle at an LOSA. And I think currently, even with this plan, we'd only be increasing to about 1,700. So, you know, based on the conditions given, we're well within that range. But improving Hooker Road is really not something that I can do. I think that's it as far as rebuttal, and I'm happy to answer your question. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Commission, any questions for the applicant at this time? Mr. Bowman?
Ms. Bryant, are you accepting of the conditions in the staff report?
Yes, we are.
And I noticed that on your Hooker Road frontage, it calls out a 10-foot multi-use path to be constructed by the City of Wilmington. Is that, that is not a developer-proposed amenity, but that's already set into motion by the city? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. One more thing. Thank you for, I know there were comments about tree removal, but I've studied the tree removal plan, and I think you've gone to rather great lengths to save the ones that are most worthy. It's hard to know how well the tree really looks when it's just noted on a plan. But, and I also recognize that the planned unit approach is a little bit more dense maybe than R-5 or R-7, rather, but it allows you to concentrate that extra area where those trees are such that they can be saved. So I appreciate that. That's all.
Thank you for recognizing that.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd chime in real quick.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bowman, I just wanted to clarify, the multi-use path is a required improvement along Hooker Road. The city is currently in the planning stages of design of that improvement. As a condition in the report is that the applicant will provide a payment in lieu of that improvement as opposed to putting that in at construction. Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay, well, they're being responsible for it coming about, which is, I think, a very helpful thing in this case, so thank you for clarifying.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sharp, did you have a question? You're muted still, Mr. Sharp.
I do, thank you. I don't know if my questions are to the applicant or to the staff. It appears from the plans that all of the internal streets are private streets on a 40-foot right-of-way. Is that correct?
They are private, yes. Brian might speak to the right-of-way.
Yes, sir. They're proposing 40-foot cross-section for private street network.
And it seems also that there is sidewalks on one side of the street?
I think after our pre-TRC, that I think what you're seeing is not the most updated. There are sidewalks on, I believe, both sides of the street, at least through the cut-through.
I'm sorry, what is the cut-through?
I'm sorry, the cut-through street. I don't know what it's called on that plan, and I don't have it in front of me, but basically you've got a circle and then one street that cuts through and connects both. And there are sidewalks on both sides of that street.
But for the remaining U-shaped loop, it is sidewalks on one side?
I'll confirm that with the engineer. I can confirm that now.
Thank you. Go ahead. My question then says, "Why would one choose to do a 40-foot right-of-way rather than a 50-foot right-of-way, which is, seems to be the norm within the region?"
He did confirm that, yes, there are sidewalks on both sides of all roads.
On all roads. That's fine. That's good. The other question I have is, there is a question of if there are more than 50 lots, then it is a requirement that there be sidewalks on both sides of the street? That's a question to you or staff.
The standard city cross-section for any street requires sidewalk on both sides unless it is a waiver granted from our subdivision review board.
Okay. And that has nothing to do, the waiver review has nothing to do with the planned unit development? That would be whether it was planned unit development, R-7 or R-15?
Correct. The road network itself would have to be reviewed by our subdivision review board in that they would take into account the proposed cross-section, which would include the right-of-way with sidewalks, curb and gutter, width of asphalt, those types of things.
And so on a standard cross-cut of a 40-foot right-of-way, there is sidewalks on both sides, there is a tree buffer, and then there's two-way traffic paving?
Yes, that is your standard cross-section.
Okay, and there is nothing in this proposal that would undercut that standard cross-section?
I have to defer to the applicant. It sounds like they are willing to put in sidewalks on both sides of the street, so that would be a different cross-section than what you see in front of you. I would suggest if that is the case, that you make that a condition.
Ma'am, is that? I'm reading from the plan. You're saying it's not the most recent? Help me work through this. I'm kind of new to the Planning Commission.
No problem. I'll try as much as I can. There is a cross-section on the plan. I want to make sure we're looking at the same.
Mine says preliminary plan, and it shows 40-foot rights-of-way on the plan. It has C1 on the bottom.
So let me just clarify, is what you're asking, if we are willing to put sidewalks on both sides of the street?
I'm asking, is your right-of-way 40-foot or 50-foot? And are you proposing to put sidewalks on both sides of the street?
Yes, it's 40 feet, which is adequate for the roadway, and yes, we will put sidewalks on both sides of the street.
And does that leave a planning median between the paving and the sidewalk?
I'm sorry, a planning, a median?
Yes, a planning margin median.
I believe it's referred to a plaza area.
I'm sorry?
A plaza between the back of curb and sidewalk. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, that's what it's called, yeah. I mean, there's usually a planted strip between sidewalk and roadway.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. I understand now.
Okay, so there is, within 40-foot right-of-way, there is adequate for two sidewalks, two planted areas, two paved traffic ways?
I believe so. I would confirm that with my engineer. It would be a huge planted area, but yes.
How did you come up with the number of 56 lots rather than a number that seems to be closer to what would be R-15?
Economics. To be quite honest with you, it wouldn't be economically feasible to build an R-15, 29, 30, 31-lot neighborhood. And most particularly, this is a plan and a product that I'm familiar with. This is a product that I've built before and sold successfully and know that it is widely accepted, particularly in the climate that we're in right now, moving into a less-dense lot neighborhood with, that would have to be much bigger houses at a much higher price point, then that would take a lot longer to move through.
So without putting words in your mouth, this is the number of maximum lots that could be fitted in with the design?
I actually think we could probably fit in a couple more if we tried really hard, but I think this...
Okay, fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Sharp. I appreciate those questions. Others from the Planning Commission at this time? Ms. Lyle?
Hi, J.C. Lyle. I'm looking at the site plan as well, and I know, I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Sharp's question about the right-of-way section, and if they added, if there's a five-foot sidewalk on each side in the 40-foot right-of-way as drawn, there would be a two-foot plaza on each side, so that would be what was left in between the valley curb and the sidewalk. So there is room for at least two feet of plaza green space there. I do have a question about Lot 38, which is closest right on Hooker Road. There's two notes that seem to be conflicting. It says active open space, and it has Lot 38. So I just wanted to confirm if that was an actual house lot, or is that intended to be active open space? Or is active open space just like an old note that isn't accurate anymore?
I'm inclined to think that it is Lot 38, and there is some active open space abutting it. I can't see on that plan, and mine certainly isn't large enough either, but I can confirm that for you.
Okay. It just happens to be a lot that, so there's five trees coming down, but as Commissioner Bowman mentioned there, not the ones that probably took priority in your tree preservation planning. The last thing I wanted to mention is that there's been a lot of conversation about the for-sale versus rentals, and I just wanted to clarify that our entity, the Planning Commission, is not inside of our jurisdiction to determine whether these units are for sale or for rent, so that wouldn't be part of our recommendation, and I wouldn't have said that out loud and also to have that confirmed, if that is accurate.
That is accurate, Ms. Lyle. Thank you very much for bringing that point out, too.
Thanks.
Any other questions you have, Commissioner Lyle?
All done. Thank you.
All right. Any other commissioners with questions? I think Mr. Hovas has some here in the room, but I want to make sure on the screen that I get everyone's question answered.
And Commissioner Lyle, the engineer does confirm that that is an old note on 38. That is a lot. No active open space there.
Great. Thank you very much for confirming that, Ms. O'Brien. Mr. Hovas?
My first question, it relates to the impervious surface that we show. We show in our report that there's 242,000 per feet of impervious surface based on what is being requested. What would the impervious be at the zoning that it is right now? I see that it's 51.8% of the site being developed. If it was stayed R-15, what would those numbers look like? Tried to do the math, and I couldn't.
Well, it's a hard question for anyone to answer. As Ms. O'Brien said, even if there were 31 lots, the housing product would be larger, so you're looking at a larger footprint of the house. Everything gets slightly different. On an average subdivision of 52% impervious surface is not out of line by any means.
So if it stayed the existing or changes that, that number really doesn't, the impervious surface that impacts...
It doesn't really change.
That's what I was trying, that's what I was trying to make sure on, because a lot of people go on the numbers, and if you went in with larger houses, you're going to have the same.
The overall effect is reasonably the same. I would hate for anybody to hear me say that it's reasonable.
I was just, I was trying to figure that. Just be comfortable with that. And then, we're not addressing the special use permit, but one of the comments was that what we're going about is an R-7 zoning, but the conditional modification reflects more of an R-5.
The planned unit development brings it into closer to an R-5 density. What we are looking at is, is it appropriate to change the zoning from R-15 to R-7 conditional district? That's all our purview is.
And I'm just trying to be consistent in where we were in the beginning, when it was an original R-5 back some time ago, and I just wanted to make sure that was out there and clear. back some time ago. And I just wanted to make sure that was out there and clear.
Right, right.
Thank you for that clarity. That's that's all.
Very welcome. Okay.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Ms. O'Brien, I have one or two questions for you, if you don't mind. I was looking at your site plan and first and foremost, I think your your plan is head and shoulders better than any of the other products that have come forward. I am very pleased to see that that you brought forth a product that is seemingly that is that is compatible with the surrounding single family neighborhoods. I think you are very, very similar to the product that is in Southern Oaks directly adjacent to you. I can't say that the densities are exactly perfect because I haven't studied it that closely. However, I think your your product looks nice. I think your price point is nice. I think you're you are, in my opinion, doing the environmental preservation that is needed from the trees that are on site and being able to protect the Bradley Creek watershed through your stormwater management because it is a much larger system than what I have seen proposed before. All that said, I think you have a really, a really nice development. I think it's nicely laid out. And I think it's something that that could be very good for this neighborhood if if it moves forward. Your lot, I think the numbers are fifteen and sixteen. They're at the end of the street that kind of stubs tees towards Southern Oaks, but it doesn't really go anywhere. The the access there on those two lots, and it may just be the lot lines of how they are their pattern at this time. But it doesn't seem that you can drive on to lot sixteen, I think it is, without going across the sidewalk and over the river and through the woods. Can you tell me about the access on those two to those two lots, please?
Yeah, and you're right. It does appear that way that the access will be at that stub. It needs to be cleaned up a little bit. And I think there's some leeway there. Again, a question for my lucky engineer. But but yes, that the access is there.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Driveway situation that you were going to be proposing because if so, we would want to make sure we put that type condition into to our but if you if you think you're going to be able to to get driveway connections on both lots fifteen and sixteen independently, then then we would will move forward with that understanding and let and let that be handled at the technical level.
Okay.
Most of I guess one of my biggest questions is if you are putting the money in escrow for or paying in lieu of the trail. Biggest step forward beyond what you've already done, and you have done a tremendous amount in in the changes. Biggest step forward in the neighborhood that I could see is build the trail while you're building your project. You know, yes, it's in the city's plan, but that may or may not be built in for some time. And you may build a trail to nowhere for a little while. But it may it may win you more public approvals than than you've than you've gotten now. I think all of us on the planning commission are thrilled, the ones that have have heard all the previous versions of this. Thrilled to see that there are folks that are actually in support of your project. I think that is that is wonderful. And it's attributable to what you've done with your community outreach and listening to the types of things they are saying. But one of the things they have said clearly the whole time through is is they would like to see that that multi use trail built. I don't know that we would need to go as far as you widening the street and putting the bike trail, but it may not be a bad gesture to to build the multi use trail. It's something for you to think about. It's something for the commissioners to think about. I don't know if it is a condition we can add to an approval by any means at this time. Yes, you may go ahead, Mr. Chambers.
Yes, Mr. Chair. This actually went to the technical review committee and due to the current situation with design of that trail, I think there's too many unanswered questions. And that's why staff is requesting a payment in lieu as opposed to the construction at this time.
Okay, so it is more a staff?
It's 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 more of a staff request than it is a developer request.
Okay, well, then that's then that answers my question. Ms. O'Brien, thank you very much. Other questions for Ms. O'Brien? Anyone else from the commission that may have a question? May not have had an opportunity to this point? Mr. Woodruff, that's not your hand raised, right? Okay, all right. Good enough. All right. So we have, thank you very much, Ms. O'Brien. And as far as the conditions that are provided in the staff report, I think you answered that you were agreeable to those and Mr. Bowman's questioning. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thanks. All right, Commission, it is now in our hands.
I think so.
Yes, I close.
So now it's in the commission's hands for deliberation and discussion. Any other questions that you guys may have for the staff? Regarding the rezoning to R seven C D.
So.
Yes, sir.
So I are is the condition of fifty foot right away with sidewalks on both sides? Not which is not reflected in the plan I have. Is that covered by the the conditions?
The there at this point is the, as I understand it, the applicant has requested a forty foot private right of way with sidewalks on each side. And that is an acceptable right away with from the city and they're not asking for a variance. So they are doing sidewalks or we can we would add that they're going to do sidewalks on both sides because their current application does not state that. But as I understood from Ms. O'Brien, that is what they're they are requesting.
Good. Thank you very much. That helps. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Woodruff, yes, sir.
I'm curious. I'm just curious. Obviously, the dynamics of this particular event involving two denials earlier, and I wasn't there, but I'm to the extent you can answer whoever was was there as simple as possible because I don't want to drag it out. But was the denials based generally on the issue and everything that comes with it with density? In these numbers, I mean, they've dropped from a hundred and eight to whatever it is sixty something now to fifty something. Is that just seems to be the primary issue was density?
Primary issue was density. It was also the rental nature of the product.
Right.
At first, they were attached duplex style. Then they went to detached rental properties. Still having some issues with with the density in the adjacent neighborhood. And it really just was not conforming. It was not in conformance with what is already in that immediate area.
Right. Okay, thank you.
And any others that were there, please chime in. Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was there and I remember that it was really an over the top dense proposal. Town homes and in the the prior developments or proposals. I I see this as a redevelopment of a nonconforming site with a lower density than what is currently on the site. And I think even the traffic impact analysis or numbers from the standards are are a little off. I think they would be probably comparable, maybe even less, given the size of some modular units. So I'm prepared to make a motion to approve agenda item three. Request is for three, two, one hooker road rezoned from R fifteen to R seven C D, the legislative matter with the ten conditions in the report. I'd like to add the condition that Mr. Sharp commented on that there be sidewalks on both sides of the street that are not represented in the plan submitted. But I do want to embellish on that new item to say that the forty inch oak by lot number twenty seven that they should swerve the sidewalk around that through the public way rather than take out the tree. However, you want to carefully word that, Brian. And that this approval this request is consistent with the objectives and policies and following plans adopted by the city of Wilmington, Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, City of Wilmington Strategic Plan, Seagate Neighborhood Plan. Planning Commission considers its approval to be reasonable in the public interest because the proposed is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It would allow for residential infill that is compatible with the existing neighborhood to Mr. Collier's points. Therefore, the planning commission recommends approval of this request.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Appreciate that. Brian is going to ask for one clarification. Mr. Chambers?
Commissioner Bowman, can you please, is it the the forty inch north of lot twenty seven in the open space?
Yeah, hold on a minute. I need to change my exhibits. I'm multitasking with multiple monitors. All right, so the largest cluster of trees that they are working to preserve in the passive open space just to the north of lot twenty seven. I assume that north is oriented up on the sheet, which oh, yeah, well, it's, I guess.
Plan north.
Yeah, plan north. Thank you. There is a forty inch oak that is right where a sidewalk would go. And there's no house or lot there. And I would think that it would not be too terribly difficult to figure out how to not sacrifice the tree for the sidewalk, even if the sidewalk had to be interrupted. It's a strong point for me. So how would I word that in a condition?
Possibly when locating sidewalk on both sides of the streets, avoid any trees that are currently identified to be saved.
Right, I accept that as a substitution.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor for approval by Commissioner Bowman for item number three. Accepting the ten conditions that are listed in the staff report. Adding item number eleven or excuse me, condition number eleven to state that sidewalk sidewalks will be installed on both sides of the street. And then we will add number twelve that sidewalks to avoid.
Existing trees shown to remain.
Existing trees to remain and there to avoid them, meaning they may need to go around the tree. Work work to avoid the trees and not remove them, in particular, the forty inch oak on lot twenty seven, north of lot twenty seven.
Correct.
Okay, so we have ten conditions, adding eleven is the number eleven is sidewalks on each side. And number twelve would be to avoid existing trees professor, avoid the existing preserved trees with the sidewalks.
Correct.
Okay, everyone understand what we're saying at this point? Or at least trying to. Ms. Bradshaw, are you getting all that? Thank you. All right, so we now have a motion to approve with with additional conditions. Do we have a second to that motion?
I second. Sharp.
Mr. Sharp, thank you, sir. So now we will roll call the vote. Commissioner Collier, yes. Commissioner Hovis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyle?
Lyle, yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Sharp, yes.
Commissioner Cortez?
Cortez, yes.
And Commissioner Woodruff?
Woodruff, yes.
Great. That is seven to zero. It passes unanimously. We appreciate the applicant's willingness to work with their surrounding neighbors and with staff to make make a project that that meets the needs of the community. We also appreciate all of the comments that came forward on this item by the public, whether for or against the item. We do take your comments to heart on why you are unable to come to the convention center due to the COVID COVID situation. And we do appreciate you expressing those concerns and providing your comments to us online. So we did hear you and we do thank you very much for those. At this time, we're going to take about a ten or fifteen minute break. Spend a little while sitting in one place and for others staring at their screen. So we're going to take about a fifteen minute break and then we will come back and begin with item number four. Thank you. Thank you. We're waiting on one more commissioner to come back online, and then we will restart the meeting. Make sure everyone's mics are muted at this time, please. All right, it looks like we have everyone, we have everyone back in attendance, so we will restart the May sixth Planning Commission meeting on item number four. Item number four is a conditional district rezoning, property containing two-point-zero-four-eight of an acre. It is located at five-two-two-zero, five-two-three-two, five-two-three-eight, five and five-two-four-four Greenville Loop Road from R-15 residential to multifamily low-density conditional district. This is to allow three single-family residential units and three duplex units for a total of nine residential units. And Mr. O'Mahony will be here this evening from the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The site is located on the southern side of Greenville Loop Road, east of the intersection of Greenville Loop Road and Pine Grove Drive, and contains approximately two-point-zero-five acres. Next slide. This map shows the general vicinity surrounding the request. The site includes four parcels and also contains two residential units, with the southernmost being proposed to be removed. The existing residence on Greenville Loop Road, which is currently operating as a group home, will remain in use. Next slide. These are photos of the subject properties, as well as photos looking east and west along Greenville Loop Road. These images show existing adjacent single-family residential uses north and east of the site. The top-right image shows multifamily uses directly west of the site. The site is currently zoned R-15 residential and was part of the nineteen-eighty-five and nineteen-ninety-eight annexations. North, south, and east of the request are zoned R-15 residential. West of the site is zoned MFL and contains multifamily residential uses. South of the site is a tidal creek. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from R-15 residential to MFL-CD, multiple-family conditional district, to demolish one existing residential structure and construct a residential development with three new duplexes and two new single-family homes for a total of nine units. Two driveway entrances to Greenville Loop Road are existing and will remain. Both a KAMA area of environmental concern and a special flood hazard area are shown on the property, however, no development is proposed within these areas. Exceptional design will be required since the proposal exceeds twenty-five percent of impervious surface. All significant trees are being preserved on-site other than those deemed by the city's arborists to be damaged or dying. Next slide. Here are the proposed elevations that were provided by the applicant. The site is located near an identified neighborhood node at the intersection of Greenville Loop Road and Pine Grove Drive on the Comprehensive Plans Growth Strategies map. Greenville Loop Road is identified as a community parkways and loop road and a planned green connection, which is a multi-use path as planned for this corridor. The proposed infill development is consistent with the development pattern of the surrounding area. It allows for an appropriate transition from higher-density multifamily housing to the west of the site and the existing single-family residences to the east. The site avoids impacts to healthy significant trees and does not encroach into environmentally sensitive areas. Staff believes the amendment is generally consistent with many of the policies of the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, the city's adopted focus areas, and staff believes the request is reasonable in the public interest and recommends conditional approval. Staff would recommend updating number, condition number five, excuse me, in your packets to include the use of a group home, which is currently existing on-site, to remain as a permitted use as this moves forward, should it be approved. That concludes staff presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here as well to give a brief presentation and answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. O'Mahony. One question and clarification, your item, condition number five. So the last sentence should be changed to read "while retaining an existing single-family group home on-site"? Is that what you said?
The proposed addition shall include the construction of three duplex structures and two single-family homes while retaining an existing single-family home on-site, which is to continue its use as a group home. I would defer to maybe the attorney to come up with precise language, but.
But just making sure that that existing single-family home that's operating as a group home remains.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Are there any questions from the commission of staff at this time? Okay, seeing none, is the applicant here and ready for their presentation?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, he is working to get your presentation up for you at this point. So if it were in nineteen-seventy-eight, we'd have that little scream with the little man about technical difficulties, but we're getting there.
Super. You can hear me now, right?
We can, thank you, thanks for your patience, too.
I can begin just a little bit relative to what drew us. I can begin just a little bit relative to what drew us to this area in, in general. The, the commercial note identified in the city's comp plan is significant. Over the last 30 years, it has had a major impact on this particular site. In fact, it, it drew the applicant initially to, to pursue the existing residential unit as a group home. And as such, since Florence, the, the house that is at 5220 Greenville Loop Road was significantly damaged to the point of it had to be demolished. So if we could go back one slide, I believe.
And if you, if you would, for the record, please just state your name and address for, just for the record, please.
I, again, I am Brian Fleer, the applicant, represent Nathan H. Holdings, 228 North Front Street address.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. On the site plan again, so just referencing the, the layout and the design, there's been considerable dialogue between our design team, our architect is here today, Ben Wilker, and one of the significant factors about this site has, has to do with the environmental constraints that we closely adhere to, monitored, including a comprehensive tree survey. As, as the planning staff mentioned, there were no significant trees removed in this particular site. We adhered to the KAMA and the floodplain zoning conditions that are actually a significant natural feature of this site. Just listening to some of the previous presentations about impervious area, one thing that's, that is an important fact about this particular project is we're at approximately 33% impervious. And a lot of that has to do with the design that the architect came up with. If we go to the next slide, I can point that out, just in terms of how we do the parking underneath the structures. And with that, we were able to minimize and accomplish stormwater management through best management practices, which was a considerable conversation with staff as we went through and really came up with the design and density that we felt was appropriate. Some significant factors that I, that relate to this site, because we, we had two, two meetings, two public meetings, like about everybody else this evening, we had two. We did our first mailing March 3rd. That meeting was March 16th. That was a, a, a public meeting. We did the next one, a video conference mailed April 15th. That meeting, that Zoom meeting was held April 28th. I have made a particular point to reach out to the community and to address any particular issues that came up. And the, the one issue that we had a conversation about was traffic on Greenville Loop, how we access Greenville Loop. Two significant factors that I think need to be pointed out, 2014, this, this, the city had a bond referendum and approved a improvement to Greenville Loop and Pine Grove Road, a double two-lane roundabout. Also, a trail that goes in, a Green, the Greenville Loop Trail that goes the entire length of Greenville Loop, that will have significant bearing on any long-term traffic impacts within the immediate area. The level of service is to significantly improve, just as a function of the build of that roundabout. So when we look at traffic compared to what we could build, approximately five single-family homes to what we're proposing, and with the new improvements, we think there's going to be significant, significant improvement in terms of level of service. With that said, I think in general, with the design, with the consideration of the immediate area and what we're, what we see from existing commercial node at Pine Grove and Greenville Loop, I think we've addressed appropriately a density. Title Oaks to the west is approximately eight units of, of per acre. This project in, in total will be somewhere between four and 4.5 dwelling units per acre. So you can see the, the general density from what would be the center of the node, for example, Lowe's Grocery Store, all the way over to the R15 further, to the, to the east and west.
Five minutes remaining.
Those are all the comments I have right now. I'd be glad to answer any questions Planning Commission would have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fleer. I appreciate your presentation. I think we will hold any questions we have for a moment, just to see if there are any others in the convention center that may want to speak in favor of. You, you do have five minutes if you have any additional comments you would like to provide. And if not, we'll, we would just hold our, our comments until public hearing is over, if that's okay.
Just one other quick note. The one drive that goes into the project, because there was a reference to buffer on the, on the residential side, which would be the west, the, it's actually the east side of the property where the two single-family residences are. That is, they share a common access easement along that private drive. So the project is, in terms of the access cuts that you see, we're accommodating those two, two homes to the east. Also, by design, we put the, the duplex units on the multifamily side where the Title Oaks apartments are, and the single-family on the R15 side on purpose to create that flow of density throughout the project. It also, within the area between the two single-family homes, we kept a, a rather significant area of younger trees because it is a significant feature on the site. So it would, the, the units were cited to not remove those trees, and that was an important consideration with staff going forward.
Okay, that, that is wonderful. I, I do think your, your site plan layout is, is very, very nice, very creative, and, and has wonderful environmental concerns, protections, environmental protections on it. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if there are any folks in the convention center in favor of item number four to please come forward. And I think that we have heard there are, there are none to speak in favor. So if there are any in the convention center that are in opposition to item number four on Greenville Loop Road, please come forward at this time. And you will have 10 minutes total for any folks speaking in opposition.
Hello, I don't know if this microphone is on.
It's on, sir. If you'll just state your name and address, I can hear you clearly.
Sure. My, my name is James Jones, and my address is 5278 Greenville Loop Road, which is the property that is, I guess, just east of this development. I think what they're doing there has a lot of, of good points. Mr. Fleer has been very easy to, to reach and talk to about things. My concerns are the changing of the zoning from R15. Right now, the old Willard Ward property, which is about half of what this development would be, is the buffer between apartment complex-type activity and the R15. Everything else across the street and going further towards Wrightsville Beach down Greenville Loop Road is all R15. My home is R15. It's just a home in front of mine. I'm the one that would be prob- probably be most impacted. The residence in front of mine is adjacent to the group home, which I have no objections to. I, I work as a nurse in two group homes, so I don't see it as any issues there, except for it takes part of this total aggregate property, unless I'm mistaken. It would be 0.424 of that 2.048 acres, which would leave about 1.6 acres to build, build the eight units on, or about two tenths of an acre per unit, which it's strikingly more dense than anything that had been there before, before there had been. Well, one house is going to be destroyed, and there was another house that was destroyed in the hurricane, as was spoken of, and a mobile home that had been behind that. But going towards Wrightsville Beach, you have a large four-acre tract with the small house on it. You have Turnstone, which used to be about a seven-acre goat farm, which was turned into all R15 housing with a cul-de-sac. I have no opposition to development. It was anticipated. I just have opposition to the density of it. I don't see where leaving an R15 would pose any significant hardships to the development of it, unless it was purchased with the intent of this change, which seems like would not have been in the best business interests of the purchaser. So that, pretty much, as I say, is, is my concerns. It's R15. It's been R15. I would like to see it remain R15, and haven't seen any clear justification. That's why it would need to be changed, other than the cost that may be tied up in the purchase of the property and the hopeful return on the investment.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your, your time, Mr. Jones, and appreciate you coming out this evening to provide your comments.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any others in the convention center that would like to come forward and speak in opposition? If so, please come forward at this time. All right. Seeing none, we will now, I will now read the, we have just a couple of comments that were provided to us online. This one is, the first one is by Mr. David Spatrino. He is in support of the project, very impressed with the land plan and the general vision of the project. Looks well thought out, and the product design and architecture provides both character and low impact to the existing conditions. This is Catherine Suggs. As a homeowner across from this property, I have multiple concerns. One, additional traffic. Two, additional wear on Greenville Loop, which is already very heavily traveled, and maintenance is poor or non-existent. Three, effects on property values. Four, effects on future sales of existing single-family homes. Five, effect on group home, effect of group home setting on value, safety, and comfort of neighborhood. Six, timing of this meeting has put property owners at a disadvantage because of the stay-at-home order. It has hindered meetings and discussions among residents. Comments that, that I have copies of that were in our, that were provided to us online. So with those and the comments provided here, I'll now close the public hearing, and I would ask if Mr. Fleer would come back to the podium. Okay, I see you, Mr. Fleer. Thank you, sir.
Let me speak to Mrs. Suggs' comments. I have spoken to Mrs. Suggs twice on the phone, and I believe once in an email exchange, and that went back to the original posting. So this, I mean, just to be clear, I understand Mrs. Suggs' comments, but we had been communicating probably for the last month. And I, I realize with the COVID-19, it's created a somewhat change in how we go about community meetings, but there has been that dialogue. I just want the planning commission to know that. We made a significant emphasis to make sure that if neighborhood wanted to talk to us, we made ourselves available. And I, I, a couple of the comments relative to traffic, we talked about it. There would not have been a decision about this property if it wasn't for the fact of the significant capital improvement investment with the roundabout at Pine Grove and Greenville Loop. That's a, that's a major consideration. And I, I don't want to be quoted, but I'm seeing, when I was looking at some of the engineering documents about level of service, if level of a service is at an F now, it was, it's at a C post-roundabout. And construction of the roundabout is supposed to start in 2022. This project will, I, I'm not going to say it's going in phases, but it will take at least two years to build out if it's approved. And so we have a somewhat of a similar, similar track. Greenville Loop Trail is also a significant intermodal opportunity. People will use that trail. It goes, it not only goes the full length of Greenville Loop, but it also connects with other trails throughout the city, and people will avail themselves of. We're all, we already see evidence of that happening today in the city and in New Hanover County. So that is, I realize there's change. And we've heard a lot of dialogue this evening. I understand the, the comments that we hear about land use and zoning. This is, this is considered because of the commercial note at Pine Grove and Greenville. There has been significant changes over the last 30 years that have changed this area. And quite, as a matter of fact, when the group home went in, that drew a new line in the sand, in our, in our view. And so I, I agree, from a density standpoint, there needs to be a transition. I think we, we showed that. It's reflected in the staff report. Again, I mentioned Title Oaks is about eight dwelling units per acre. We go down to four and a half. That's by design. We have adhered to best management practices with stormwater, tree survey, really the environmental features that are most significant. The soils on this site are absolutely, I mean, if you know anything about seasonal high water table, we're at like 64 inches. And that, you wouldn't think that necessarily unless you went in and actually did the soil analysis. That allowed us to do some comprehensive best management practices going forward. For being good neighbors, I've actually spoken to the Joneses about a driveway access that they enjoy as a private access easement. That will be maintained. Any other issues relative to development or construction to adjoining neighbors will be mitigated. We, we want to be good neighbors. We want to be good citizens relative to the project at hand. So with all of the factors that we look at, we firmly believe that if you left, if you did nothing and you built five single-family homes with the 4,000-square-foot footprint, we actually end up with a better product with what we're proposing. We would ask Planning Commission to consider that as we move forward, in that it does match the, the issues that are important relative to the comp plan going forward, particularly in these areas of transition from a commercial, higher-density to what would be an R15 or single-family zone district. The one thing I hear, I hear values. We hear that a lot. I'm also a commercial real estate broker. I, we understand what the value scenario is. It's just not the case. I mean, these properties will be appraised and/or will have values that meet or exceed adjoining, adjoining properties. I understand the other issues, but the value question is not one that's sustainable, ongoing relative to land use considerations. This is not a low-income project. It just isn't. We're in workforce housing and other projects. This is not that product. This is a market-rate product that will drive market-rate values. And I think Planning Commission members, you've, you've been through this. You understand those dynamics. Those are the main points that we've discussed. Again, I'd be glad to answer any questions that the commission might have at this time.
Thank you, sir. What questions do the commit, or would the commission have at this time? Ms. Cortez?
Well, I don't have so many questions so much as a lot of comments and concerns. I actually live on Greenville Loop Road. I'm a neighbor. And I kind of feel like I'm taking the position now of some of the folks on Hooker Road saying, why do you need this kind of density? I have to agree with Mr. Jones. I, I don't see the rationale for the increased density in this piece of property. Very recently, I've watched a number of properties of about this size on Greenville Loop Road and on Pine Grove being developed, and going from one or two houses to seven, nine. And, and I, I watch in my own property, when we get a storm, and I watch the water just gushing into the creek. Now, we've spent a year talking about Now, we've spent a year talking about docks and piers and preserving our natural environment and saving the creek. I look at our water quality report that we all get, and for the last five years, Hewlett Creek has just been abysmal. So I'm asking, what are we doing? I know you're talking about stormwater management and best practices. But we are polluting Hewlett's Creek. We're polluting our watersheds with all of this runoff. And we continue to develop these key properties that are bordering on these, these creeks that we claim are so important to our economic viability and, and getting people here. But what are we doing to improve the water quality? Why are we continuing? I mean, right across the creek, there's Creekfront with thirty houses going up. A few doors down from me is another property with seven houses, next door a house. Now this property, what are we, what kind of a study is being done? What's the impact on the water quality? We do traffic studies. Are we doing a water study? We have UNCW here. What, what can they tell us about what we're doing to the creek? In addition to that, traffic is a real issue. Traffic backs up all the way to my house over a mile to Pine Grove. Yes, we're going to get a roundabout, hopefully. But the traffic is so bad on Greenville Loop Road right now. If, if we get to a level C, that would be wonderful. I mean, do I really think that the number of houses you're proposing is going to make that much of a difference? No, because it's really people that are trying to avoid oleander to get onto college that are using Greenville Loop as a pass-through. But we've had a tremendous amount of development on the other end of Greenville Loop Road, and that's continuing. So, you know, I think we have to ask ourselves, how much do we value our environment? And at what point are we going to limit the amount of development that's right on the creek? I was looking at one of our, what was it, a low-impact development practices, and they talked about, yes, we need to do infill, and it said, "An even better approach would be to direct new development to previously developed but underutilized properties." That might be the case here, that are ripe for redevelopment. Typically, these properties are on higher ground, away from sensitive areas, and already served by a full complement of infrastructure. It's a really nice design, and I would love it if it were somewhere else. But it, I just don't think it's appropriate. That's my comment.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that, Ms. Cortez. Other, other members of the commission? Mr. Hovis, do you have anything? Mr. Fleer, I think my, my personal opinion is that you have done quite a bit in protecting the environment. I'm not sure to water quality studies as Ms. Cortez's point. But could you comment more on your stormwater management practices that you will be using and, and your buffering adjacent to, adjacent to Hewlett Creek, Hewlett's Creek, please?
Absolutely. Again, one of the mitigating factors that was important in how we cited this. We have to go in and do soil borings, understand what the complexity of, this is upland. In fact, when I first walked this site, I was surprised. And when we did the soil analysis, we were even more pleasantly surprised because the soils are conducive to being able to absorb runoff. We do not want to do a detention pond because detention ponds create the problem that I believe the commissioner alluded to, that if, if you have quick flash, above twenty-five-year storms, then you can have encroachment into, in this case would be Hewlett Creek. The best, the best way to mitigate those issues is best management practices that can absorb directly into the groundwater, and those are the designs. I, I believe the, the, Mr. Mahoney has already mentioned that we'll have to adhere to those kind of qualities and be approved by the city relative to the actual impacts per unit. And that's why we're, we're proposing previous, any of our additional parking areas that are not under a structure would be impervious, as you may be familiar with the building material. The idea is not to have quick runoff into the marsh. And we're willing to do the, the design considerations that would allow to show that. Because we too believe that this is a long-term sustainable issue that needs to be mitigated. We don't want to be, we want to be part of the solution, not the problem. And I think we have shown that in the design initially, in the layout, in the footprint that does not go in and absolutely knock out the entire forest relative to the footprint of the houses. That was a very important consideration with staff. And I believe that overall density, I mean, we're talking about four additional units beyond what would normally be allowed without a rezoning. So think about it. What can we do? We can, we feel we can actually come up with a better design scenario with the, these best management practices. The other thing is we are hooking up the city water and sewer or the Cape Fear Public Utility Water and Sewer. And so we don't have those issues. It's my understanding that the cottage that's actually in the Kama is going to be removed, and that's on septic. That's going to be gone. So in that factor, we're actually improving that situation because all the structures will be on sewer and or water. So Ben, did you have anything else you wanted to add relative to design? I, I have the designer here, Herman Collier, if he is permitted to speak at this point, he may be able to elaborate a little bit.
Hello, Commissioner. My name is Ben Welker, and I'm the architect for this project. I just wanted to touch briefly on the size of these units. I know we focus a lot on dwelling units per acre. And we may be proposing a slightly higher density of dwelling unit per acre. However, these dwelling units are quite efficient in their use of space. In other words, if we remain an R fifteen on this site and we propose a total of four or five single-family homes, typically those would be three to four thousand square feet of impervious. With the increased dwelling unit count, we're right at the same amount of impervious as it would be remaining in R fifteen. So we're not proposing an increase in impervious at all if it was to remain R fifteen. But moving to NFL does allow us to preserve more of the natural features on the site, such as that young forest with a lot of young pine trees that are growing. And we're really hoping that this layout, which isn't possible with R fifteen, it, it just enables us to, to have more natural features on the site to, and to be able to conserve them.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. All right, Commissioner, are there additional questions for the applicant at this time? If not, do we have? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Lyle.
Hello. Thank you, Commissioner Lyle. I, I think the site plan, I agree, the site plan's creative. It's in a great place in between the R fifteen and the condos. So I think it's a well-thought-out plan, and I appreciate the flexibility that the multifamily zoning district gives you. My question concern is, and you've taken a lot of steps to maintain the natural features, as the designer mentioned, I can see that. The, the one exception is that beautiful, I don't know if it's beautiful, I haven't seen it, but that thirty-nine, I think it says thirty-nine inch oak that is proposed to be taken down duplex number four. And it seems like just a change, a shift in location of that deck would be able to save that or shift of that duplex itself would be able to save that oak. And so I wonder if you had looked at that and considered that.
I, I believe, and I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but we think it's dead or dying. If it isn't, I, I agree with your comments about the possibility.
All right, we referred to an arborist report, but I don't, I didn't have that. I don't, I don't know if that was, I don't know where to find that.
Let's, I, in, in the arborist report, it then identified that particular tree as a disease, dead or dying tree. And so I think that's why we ended up with the, the structure where it is. We would be glad to relook at that, to make, to confirm that. Obviously, I would agree with you. If that was a healthy tree, we'd like to keep it. But we can take a look at that and confirm that that in fact is the case in the, in the report.
Okay, we've got Mr. O'Mahony. The staff member wants to speak to this issue.
Commissioner Lyle, as, as part of the technical review committee process, the applicant had submitted a report to the city's arborist, Aaron Reese, and he had agreed with the determination that the trees that they're proposing to remove were either dead or in the process of dying. And it was in agreement about that thirty-nine inch oak there as well as being one of those trees.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any additional questions? Ms. Cortez?
Yes, I would just like to ask if it's possible for me to get any of the details on exactly what constitutes these best practices for stormwater management. I, I've looked around to see, everybody uses the term best practices, but I don't know exactly what that refers to. If you could send me something or send me in the right direction to find this information, I would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. We will have, we'll get Mr. O'Mahony to send you the, the information from their, the full information from the package to make sure you have that information. The, the description he's providing sounds more stormwater infiltration, not wet ponds or any of those type things. But I, I certainly can't say that's definitely what it is. But it does
That's accurate.
Sixty-four inches to seasonal high groundwater and good soils. It's, it's going to soak in very quickly.
It is more infiltration-related. That's correct.
All right, any additional questions that we have? If not, I would entertain a motion from the commission. Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to hog the motions tonight, but I did want to say after the applicant was through, I believe that smaller footprints, multi-story approach, and low-density development, I think it's less than twenty-five percent, are all very good to the environment. And transitionally saving the small, or the, the young trees as buffer against the R fifteen, I think it's an appropriate layout, but I defer to other discussion.
Mr. Bowman, I tend to agree with you on that. I think that the building size, the building location and placement have been, you know, the duplexes are, are aligned on the side of the property, the western side, where the existing multifamily exists. There's a clear separation from, a larger separation from their location to the existing single-family. There are two, the two single families that are to be constructed are, would be in harmony with the, with the adjacent single-family uses as well. And I do think they've, they've done a, a very good job of staying out of and protecting the watershed, although it's still, it's still impervious surface to some degree. But I think with, with a clear, a clear understanding of their, their stormwater management system, I think that they can manage their water on-site. And I know that our stormwater, our stormwater folks at the city will make sure that that is, that is foremost taken care of during any technical reviews. I do like the use of some pervious pavers or pavement in various locations where you're out from, where concrete's out from under the parking areas, I think is how it was stated. And the use of that is, is really good, is it will also provide that, that ability to have more, more of an impact of infiltration directly into the soils and cut down on that runoff potential directly into Hewlett's Creek.
Yes, I, I agree. And regarding Agenda Item One, I would like to propose the approval of this request as it's consistent with the objectives and policies of the following plans adopted by the City of Wilmington. The Great Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, City of Wilmington Strategic Plan. Planning Commission considers its approval to be reasonable in the public interest because the proposal is generally consistent with the recommendations of both the City Strategic Plan, Great Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, the proposed infill development, consistent with the development patterns of surrounding area, and serves as an appropriate transition from the high-density multifamily housing to the west of the site and the existing single-family residents to the east. Therefore, the Planning Commission would recommend approval of this request. I would add the items in the staff report that are eight recommendations. And regarding number five, it would adjust, the proposed addition shall include the construction of three duplexes and two single-family homes and retain the existing single-family home on-site currently operating as a group home. That would be my.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor for approval by Commissioner Hovis. That is accepting the conditions in the staff report with the modifications stated to number five. Are there, are there any questions on this motion? If not, is there a second? We have a second, second by Commissioner Lyle. Any other questions? Not, I will call, call for the vote. Commissioner Woodruff?
Yes.
Commissioner Cortez?
Nay.
Commissioner Sharp?
Sharp, yea.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyle?
Lyle, yea.
Commissioner Hovis?
Yes.
And Commissioner Collier, yes. So this item passes six to one. So thank you very much. We appreciate everyone's time and, and time and concern and comments, and look forward to working with you all in the future. We will now move forward to item number five. Item number five is brought by the city staff. It is a Land Development Code Amendment to amend the City Code, Chapter Eighteen, Section Eighteen dash one nine four, CB, Community Business District, eighteen dash one nine five, RB, Regional Business District, eighteen dash one nine seven, CS, Community Service District, and eighteen dash two five seven, CDMU, Commercial, Commercial District Mixed Use to add laundromat with no drive-up window as a permitted use. And Jeff Walton is here to provide this, the staff report.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next slide, please. The proposed amendment would allow laundromats with no drive-up windows as a permitted use in the CB, RB, and CS zoning districts, and also within the CDMU Commercial District Use. Am I too tall? I can go lower. Next slide, please. Actually, right there, it's fine. Prior to the adoption of the current Land Development Code in two thousand and four, as you can see on the screen, laundromats, dry cleaning, and such services were allowed in the zones. Next slide. In two thousand and five, the Land Development Code was adopted, and laundromat services were no longer allowed. And they were only allowed in, in what's on the screen. The Commercial District Mixed Use Regulations allow for residential uses to be included within otherwise commercial developments. And laundromats are not permitted as a use in the CDMU currently. The proposed amendment would allow laundromats with no drive-up windows as a permitted use in the CB, RB, and CS districts and within CDMU. Laundromats are not defined in Article Fifteen of the Land Development Code. Laundromats are not defined in Article Fifteen of the Land Development Code. Generally, laundromats are defined as a place where you pay to operate machines, machines to wash and dry clothes. The proposal is in compliance with the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan by permitting laundromat uses in close proximity to where people live and work and encouraging a mix of uses. The proposed amendment is consistent with the recommendations to Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, the City of Strategic Plan, and in the public interest, staff recommends approval of the, of the amendment. And just to remind you, this is a staff-initiated amendment, and so there's no applicant presence. I'll be happy answering questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Walton. I appreciate your, your presentation. Is there any questions right now from, uh, the commission for Mr. Walton? Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Walton, is, was there, uh, any special project that precipitated this, or was this just, uh, seen as a inconsistency that could be improved upon?
There is a, an item coming up, uh, for rezoning on Wrightsville Avenue. Seven or eight? I think it's item number eight. There is a, that is a rezoning that did kind of have some influence on this, but, as staff, we felt that this was definitely missing in the code. You know, laundromats are a good transition, uh, if placed near residential and multifamily zones, and we felt that, um, having this added back into the code was really appropriate.
Okay, um, and this is, and this is laundromat, not dry cleaning?
That's correct. It's, uh, just laundromats with no drive-up windows.
Okay, thank you.
We consider dry cleaning to be a more intense use where it would be more appropriate in the more commercially zoned areas, less against residential.
That was my thought, and that is, uh, defined separately.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions for, uh, Mr. Walton at this time? Okay, seeing none, we do need to open the public hearing for this item. Any folks that are in attendance, uh, in the convention center that would like to speak in favor of or against at this time? Anyone like to speak in favor or against item number five, the Land Development Code Amendment? All right, seeing there are none in attendance that would like to speak in, uh, favor or in opposition, we will now close the public hearing. And I would, uh, ask Mr. Walton, any final closing words? Nope, you're good. Mr. Walton said he had no closing comments. Any, if there are no questions or concerns from the staff, uh, we would gladly entertain a motion.
Regarding Agenda Item Number Five, Case LDC dash four dash five two zero, I would request approval of this request as it is consistent with the objectives and policies of the following plans adopted by the City of Wilmington. The Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, the City of Wilmington Strategic Plan. The Planning Commission considers its approval to be reasonable in the public interest based on the following conclusions. The proposed amendment is consistent with the recommendations of both the City Strategic Plan, Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, by permitting laundromat use in close proximity to where people live, work, and encourage mix of use. Therefore, the Planning Commission would recommend approval of this request.
All right, we have a motion for approval by Commissioner Hovis. Uh, there are no conditions in the staff report for this. Do I have a second to this motion?
Woodruff, second.
Second by Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Woodruff, is that what you said? Okay, Commissioner Wood-
Woodruff.
All right, so, uh, any other additional questions? If not, I will take roll call. Uh, Mr. Woodruff?
Yes, Woodruff.
Commissioner Cortez?
Yes, Cortez, yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Sharp, yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyle?
Lyle, yes.
Commissioner Hovis?
Yes.
And Commissioner Collier, yes. That motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Walton, for being here. All right, we will move on now to, uh, land develop, uh, excuse me. Item number six, which is also a conditional district rezoning. And this is for property containing one point five one acres, uh, located at thirty-eight nineteen Carolina Beach Road from CBSD, which is Community Business Special Use District, to Community Business Conditional District to allow for retail, restaurant, office, and personal service uses. Nicole Smith will be the planner, uh, presenting this case. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Chairman Collier. Next slide. The site includes one parcel containing approximately one point five one acres and is located east of Carolina Beach Road and south of Independence Boulevard. Next slide. This map provides site context and highlights the site location. Next slide. This slide provides the existing conditions of the site. The top images are looking at the site from the shopping center as well as Carolina Beach Road. The bottom images are looking north and south on Carolina Beach Road. Next slide. This slide illustrates the existing adjacent development. The top image is of the vacant property located north of the request, adjacent to Carolina Beach Road. The top right image is of the shopping center, east of the request. The bottom left image is of the vacant property located west of the site, adjacent to Independence Boulevard. The bottom right image is of a vacant parcel located south of the request that's currently approved for a car wash. Next slide. In April nineteen ninety-five, this parcel was part of the Community Business Special Use District, which encompassed the entire mixed-use center on the southeast corner of the intersection of Independence Boulevard and Carolina Beach Road. Other properties originally affiliated with the Special Use District have since rezoned to conditional districts. The parcel under consideration for this conditional district was originally approved for a twelve thousand square foot, single-tenant building. Next slide. The applicant is proposing to rezone from Community Business Special Use District to Community Business Conditional District to allow for a ten thousand four hundred and fifty square foot commercial building to include a restaurant with drive-through facility, retail, office, and personal services. Full access to the site is provided via an existing thirty-foot access easement connected to Independence Boulevard. A second driveway limited to existing traffic is accessed off another thirty-foot access easement connected to Carolina Beach Road. Next slide. On your screen is the elevation proposed by the applicant as viewed from Independence Boulevard. Next slide. The Comprehensive Plan identifies this area as a greenfield site, multi-use place. The plan calls for the site to make connections to adjacent areas and incorporate them into new development and develop multi-use areas and provide multimodal connections. The proposed use provides additional services to citizens within an interconnected commercial node and is located within a high-intensity area of opportunity. The proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan and the city's adopted focus areas. Staff believes the request is reasonable and in the public interest and recommends conditional approval subject to the conditions outlined in the case summary. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, ma'am, very much, Ms. Smith. We appreciate your presentation. It was nice, nice and thorough. Are there any questions for Ms. Smith at this time? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Ms. Wolf, are you, uh, ready?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Uh, he may be getting your presentation up, so you may, we give one second.
I will do that. Well, and for the record, I'm Cindy Wolf. I'm the applicant on this site. And as Nicole pointed out, this was originally zoned back in nineteen ninety-five, and back then, there was a master plan for what they thought that Food Lion Shopping Center and the out parcels would be. And this, I believe, was some type of a fairly small office complex. It has certainly been an underutilized site over all these years, and it's finally becoming prime in this commercial node that's been created by Independence Boulevard and Carolina Beach Road. The next slide, please. I have totally streamlined my presentation based upon the way we are having these, uh, hearings right now. So I'll be brief. Um, this is just a colored-up copy of what Nicole has already shown you. I think that this particular commercial center, um, will fit very well in here. Existing pond serves the whole development and will also serve this site. It was already intended to do so back when the pond was designed, and we'll work with the city staff and the stormwater management, to make whatever modifications are necessary. Next slide, please. She showed you this. This is a preliminary, uh, building elevation. It is strictly just a commercial center. We're hoping to have some nice outdoor space with the restaurant that we suppose would be a prime tenant in this particular facility. Next slide. And just to close, um, generally, I have more specifics about the consistency, but I'll defer to the staff's, uh, report that we do agree with the conditions that they have recommended upon approval. We totally agree with all of the consistency that they've, um, identified in their chart and the statement that the staff is in support, and we hope that you'll support it also. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wolf. We appreciate that. And, uh, one, one item of note is the, I guess, the elevation of the building and the site plan. If you have outdoor seating, it appears to have been on that, the low side of the building, the drive-through side of that building, and I know that's representative.
That, it's just representative, and I, we don't have something that's site, totally site-specific, but it just was indicative of the fact that we would have connecting sidewalks out to the sidewalks to Independence and Carolina Beach Road, and that there would be sort of public spaces that are what we're looking for in the newer commercial complexes these days.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Wolf at this time? All right. Thank you, Ms. Wolf. At this time, we will open the public hearing, and I will ask that if there are any in the audience or in the convention center that are looking to speak for the project, in support of the project, please step forward. Seeing, seeing none, uh, we will, are there any that would like to speak in opposition to item number six at this time? Okay, there, there are none, none signed up at this point, and I did not receive any, uh, any comments on item number six, any public comments. So we have, uh, none to read, so I will close the public hearing at this time. And, um, Ms. Wolf, any closing comments?
No, thank you, sir.
All right. Uh, commission, what is your, what is your will? What, or do you have any questions or comments, uh, regarding item number six? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lyle.
Sorry, I was trying to find my other button, but having multiple window issues regarding Agenda Item Number Five. The address is not on my consistency statement. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Number six, it's late. Regarding Agenda Item Number Six, three eight one nine Carolina Beach Road, uh, rezoning it from, uh, CB, CBSD to CBCD, uh, we recommend approval, a move to approve this request, which is consistent with the objectives and policies of following plans adopted by the City of Wilmington. Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, the City of Wilmington Strategic Plan. The Planning Commission considers its approval to be reasonable in the public interest because the proposal is consistent with the recommendations of both cities' Strategic, Strategic Plan and Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan. The proposed development includes minimal change to a previously approved plan and will be generally compatible with the existing context and the existing shopping center. Therefore, we recommend the approval of this request and the eleven conditions in the staff report.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lyle, and it's a motion to approve with the staff's conditions as written. Ms. Wolf has acknowledged that, uh, she is accepting of these conditions. Do I have a second to this motion to approve? Second from Commissioner Bowman. We'll now go roll call for specific votes. Uh, Commissioner Woodruff?
Yes.
Commissioner Cortez?
Cortez, yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Sharp, yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyle?
Lyle, yes.
Commissioner Hovis?
Yes.
And Commissioner Collier, yes. Thank you very much, Ms., uh, Ms. Wolf. This item passes seven to zero. Thank you for your time. All right, item number seven. We are moving along now almost one page. Item number seven is also a conditional district rezoning, but it is a modification in its property containing three point four four acres. It's located at six one five, six one seven, six one nine, six two one, and six two three South Per Avenue to modify an existing multifamily medium-density conditional district site plan and rezone additional property from our ten residential district to multifamily medium-density commercial, uh, excuse me, conditional district for two additional three-story, twelve-unit structures for a total of forty-eight residential units. And Jeff Walton will be the planner for this, uh, for this item. Mr. Walton?
Yes, sir. Uh, next slide, please. On January sixth, uh, twenty fifteen, City Council rezoned the southern half of the site from our ten residential to multifamily medium conditional district, uh, to allow construction of two three-story apartment buildings, housing twenty-four units. Construction on the project known as Seahawk Cove was completed in twenty sixteen. Next slide. Uh, tonight, the applicant proposes to modify an existing multifamily medium CD site plan and rezone an additional portion of property to the north from our ten to multifamily medium initial district for two additional three-story, twelve-unit structures for a total of forty-eight residential units for the entire site. This, um, map here is the overall area. Next slide. Is the, this is the, uh, subject property of what's currently out there. The next slide is of the adjacent properties, which is mostly single-family residential to the north and across, uh, South Per Avenue. Next slide. Driveway access would be provided by an existing driveway located on the screen from South Per Avenue. The State Transportation Improvement Program currently includes a project to widen South Per Avenue to multiple lanes between Patrick Avenue and Wrightsville Avenue. Right away is currently scheduled for twenty twenty-five with construction starting in twenty twenty-seven, but the property is currently unfunded. Next slide. The Comprehensive Plan identifies low-to-medium-density residential developments as appropriate transitions between lower-density neighborhoods and more intensive commercial residential mixed-use areas. Plan also calls for development within existing neighborhoods to be consistent with the design elements of nearby structures and enhance the overall character of the area. Next slide. The amendment is consistent with several policies of the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, the Wilmington, uh, adopted focus areas, and staff believes the request is reasonable and in the public interest, and we recommend conditional approval subject to the following recommended conditions in your case summary. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I can't read in the front.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. We appreciate your sacrifice.
Sure.
Any questions for Mr. Walton at this time for Agenda Item Number Seven? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Wolf, are you, uh, have a presentation for item number seven?
Very brief. If they'll just pull up, uh, the first. My name's Cindy Wolf, and I'm the applicant on here. I was the applicant for the first version of it, which was a few years ago, and it's been very successful. This is simply an expansion of that. Next slide, please. To add the two new buildings, we're not introducing any other driveways, and similar to the first, uh, phase of this, where a really nice- to the first phase of this where a really nice existing natural area was maintained in front of the front building. This building is a little closer to South Carr Avenue, but similarly there are existing trees that have been identified along that frontage and we've maintained a more than adequate setback from Carr Avenue so that we could save that natural area. Next slide is again a picture of the same architecture that will be duplicated with these other two buildings. We agree with the conditions that staff has put forward and all of the consistency that they've found to the different comprehensive land use plan policies and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Wolf, will you speak to the buffering you're providing between your multifamily and the single-family to the, they get more.
There is just one single family just sort of remaining on our side of Carr Avenue. It has got the blue tarps on it, as you can see probably from the hurricane damage. In this particular, the existing Seahawk Cove was granted the 10-foot fenced alternative buffer yard based on the narrowness of the site and also I think the premise that things along Carr Avenue, if you look at the history of it, are transitioning all the way up to Randall Parkway and multifamily or more dense types of development. And so here, we are basically moving the fence one more step up and still using the solid fence with landscaping alternative as a 10-foot buffer rather than a 20-foot buffer. But we are buffering to that single family.
Right, right. Thank you. I appreciate you, you're giving us that explanation. All right. Any other questions for Ms. Wolf on item number seven before we go to public hearing? I think I have one, but I don't know who's named that. Mr. Sharp, I think that is... Mr. Sharp, you're still muted.
Could you describe the one-story clubhouse or amenity building that's on the site plan?
That is something that we've looked into over the past couple of years and now this expansion of it makes it even more attractive as far as adding it. It's just a one-story amenity center. Generally, it's available to the tenants for rent. It often has Wi-Fi for sort of a business center if the tenants need a place to go to study or whatever, so there's not a lot I can say about it. I don't have an elevation, I apologize. Was there something specific you wanted to know about it?
No, thank you very much.
Any additional comments? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wolf. At this time, we will open the public hearing and I will ask for any folks in the convention center that are wanting to speak for or in support of item number seven, please come Okay, it doesn't look like we have anyone to speak for or against at this time. Okay, so seeing that there are none present or waiting to speak for or against, we will close the public hearing. Are there any final questions for Ms. Wolf before we move forward into deliberations? And if not, I would certainly entertain a motion for agenda item number seven.
Woodruff, regarding item number seven, make a motion to approve the request regarding 615, 617, 619, 621, 623, South Carr Avenue modifying MF MCD and rezone from R10 to MF MCD. The request is consistent with the objectives and policies of the following plans, Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, City of Wilmington Strategic Plan. Planning Commission considers its approval to be reasonable in the public interest because the proposal is generally consistent with the recommendations of both the city's strategic plan and Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan. The proposed density and use serve as a suitable transition between established commercial areas to the south and the existing multifamily uses to the east and west of the site. Recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Woodruff. So we have a motion for approval with the accepted conditions. Do we have a second for this motion? We have a second from Commissioner Cortez. I will need you to say it verbally though, Ms. Cortez.
Cortez, second.
Thank you, ma'am. This time I will have roll call on the vote. Mr. Woodruff?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Sorry.
Ms. Cortez?
Cortez, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sharp?
Sharp, yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Bowman, yes.
Ms. Lyle?
Lyle, yes.
Mr. Hovis?
Yes.
And Mr. Collier, yes. This motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much for being here again, Ms. Wolf. All right. We are going to move on to item number eight on our, number eight on our agenda. Item number eight is a conditional district rezoning of property containing 0.42 of an acre located at 2323 Wrightsville Avenue from CS, which is Commercial Services, to CB, Community Business Conditional District, within the Wrightsville Avenue corridor overlay to allow 4,000 square feet of commercial space and a maximum of five residential units. Mr. Walton is once again our planner for this item. Mr. Walton?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So next slide, please. The applicant does propose to rezone the site to Community Business for a mixed-use The parcel is currently vacant but was previously occupied by self-serve car wash facility. Next slide. There's no known zoning history on the site. The proposed site is within the Wrightsville Avenue corridor overlay and must comply with the design regulations of that section of code. Next slide. The subject property, as noted, is a former car wash self-service facility. It has been demolished and has been fully graded, as you can see in the attached photos. Next slide. The adjacent photos are mostly multifamily and commercial surrounding the site. It also backs up to an existing CSX railroad bed. Next slide. Of the proposed commercial space, 3,000 square feet would be for a laundromat use and 1,000 would be for just general commercial uses. Five residential units are also proposed as part of a commercial district mixed-use. The proposed project is continuing to utilize the existing driveway connection from Wrightsville Avenue. Next slide. Wrightsville Avenue is identified as a community connector for planned and conceptual green connections as identified along Wrightsville Avenue and the adjacent rail corridor on the comprehensive growth strategies map. The proposal consists of infill development consistent with the surrounding area with little impact to the adjacent properties, allowing services such as laundromats within walking distance of multifamily developments and single-family neighborhoods is encouraged. Next slide. The Wrightsville Avenue 2030 Plan encourages a balanced mix of land uses that offer options for residents while ensuring new developments enhance the corridor and enhances the surrounding neighborhoods. The plan recommends to phase out CS uses and encourages neighborhood-scale commercial uses that generate minimum amounts of traffic and complements and enhances the adjacent neighborhoods. Next slide. By plus commercial services and multifamily residents within walking distance of the current CSX rail corridor, the project is consistent with the broad transportation objectives of the city's rail realignment and repurposing initiative. Staff believes the amendment is consistent with the many policies of the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, the Wrightsville Avenue 2030 Plan, the city's adopted focus areas, and staff believes the request is reasonable and in the public interest recommends conditional approval with the following recommended conditions contained in the case summary. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you once again, Mr. Walton, for that wonderful presentation. And at this time, is there any questions for Mr. Walton from the commission? All right. Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Walton.
Thank you.
Ms. Wolf?
Good evening. This is Cindy Wolf. I am the applicant of this particular site. They'll bring up my presentation in just a second, which is really just a color rendering of the site plan again. My client has, you know, just stepped forward and taken care of that demolition of the old car wash, as Jeff pointed out. It's just the first step in really improving the aesthetics around this entire area. We believe that is a much more appropriate type of use for this site than a lot of the CS uses would be. I do want to point out that after I filed the project report, which we're doing a little bit differently now, but I gave people about three weeks to respond with comments or anything else in the mail-out, I did receive a call just yesterday from a Ms. Mendoza who is over at the Trolley Path and she didn't like the idea of the laundromat, thinking that it would cause more traffic, but what I tried to explain to her is, and she thought that it was a residential property. What I explained to her was that in the CS district, types of things like automotive repair and much more intense types of uses could have replaced that car wash by right and even in the Wrightsville Avenue corridor. So we truly believe that this mixed-use, a new building, controlled parking, we've saved the trees around the site, that there aren't many of them obviously, but what there are, we have saved, that this is certainly consistent with what we're looking to establish along Wrightsville Avenue. We're going through not only this rezoning, but it'll also be a special use permit since the building is more than 3,000 square feet on the Wrightsville Avenue corridor. So, next slide, please. I'd be happy to answer any questions about this particular project, but as infill goes, I think this is exactly what we're looking for when, in our long-range plans and strategies for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the commission at this time? All right. Thank you, Ms. Wolf. We will now open the public hearing. Are there, or is there anyone in the convention center that would like to speak either for or against the item number eight? Seeing none and being given the signal that there are none, we did not receive any public comments on this item on the website either, so I will close the public hearing and I would ask the commission for any final comments, questions, or a motion. Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move to approve agenda item eight, request for 2323 Wrightsville Avenue to rezone from CS to CB, Conditional Use District and Wrightsville Avenue corridor overlay, and that this request is consistent with the objectives and policies of the following plans adopted by the City of Wilmington and as Cindy pointed out, Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, Wrightsville Avenue 2030 Plan, City of Wilmington Strategic Plan, and the Planning Commission considers its approval to be reasonable in the public interest because the proposal is generally consistent with the recommendations, both the two plans that I mentioned, three plans, and the proposed development would also add to the mix of uses in the area, would not adversely impact the desired character of the existing built environment. Therefore, Planning Commission recommends approval of this request, including the nine items in the staff report.
We accept.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate you.
Second.
And, yeah, second, Commissioner Sharp. So going through roll call, Mr. Woodruff?
Woodruff, yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Cortez, yes.
Sharp?
Sharp, yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Bowman, yes.
Ms. Lyle?
Lyle, yes.
Hovis?
Yes.
And Mr. Collier, yes. So this item also passes seven to zero. Thank you again, Ms. Wolf and Mr. Walton. All right. On to item number nine. We're almost there, folks. Item number nine is rezoning property containing 0.51 acres and this is located at 12152nd Street from R10 Residential District to R5 Residential District. And Patrick O'Mahony will be our planner for this one. Welcome back, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This proposal, next slide, please. This proposal includes one parcel containing approximately 0.51 acres. The site is located on the northeast corner of 52nd Street and Mulberry Avenue. The parcel was annexed effective March 25, 1985 and currently contains one single-family dwelling. Next slide. This map provides context and highlights the site location. Next slide. This slide provides the existing conditions of the site. The top images are looking north towards the subject property from 52nd Street and Mulberry Avenue. The bottom image shows the subject property facing east towards the adjacent property on Mulberry Avenue. These images are of the adjacent land uses. The property is surrounded by single-family residential uses. Images shown on the screen show the residences to the west, southwest, and south. The site is currently zoned R10 residential and the site is also surrounded by single-family residential uses. There is also R5 CD zoning adjacent to the site. The remainder of the parcel is surrounded by R10 zoning with R5 further to the east. The comprehensive plan encourages development that enhances or improves the existing character and development pattern of the area. The request would allow for development and redevelopment that is compatible and appropriate with the surrounding area. This area contains a variety of housing types, including detached single-family duplexes and manufactured homes. The request is consistent with the surrounding area and the proposed infill of this property would be in a similar context to the existing neighborhood. Staff believes the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the recommendations of the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan and the focus areas of the city's strategic plan. Staff believes the request is reasonable and in the public interest and recommends approval of this request. That concludes my presentation. I am here to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions on item number nine? And recognizing item number nine is a straight rezoning, it is not a conditional district rezoning, so you will not have a site plan and there are no conditions attached. All right. Seeing no questions, thank you very much, Mr. Mahoney. Ms. Wolf, welcome back. Changed plan? That was good.
I'm Cindy Wolf and representing the owner of the property. As Pat pointed out, there's been some other R5 zonings in the vicinity. There are others that have been there for quite a long time and even though some of the, even though the R10 around us, the property on Mulberry behind us is two duplexes on a single lot, so that's a non-conforming. Other of the lots going up 52nd Street are non-conforming in their widths and some of them in their overall square footages too. So I think this is a perfect opportunity for infill that has been consistent in redeveloping this area. In fact, this particular site had two homes in it. My client just eliminated a modular home that was on the bottom part of it and as in R10, we're separating it into two lots, which will remain the two lots in an R5. So I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Are there any questions for Ms. Wolf at this time? All right. Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Wolf. We will open the public hearing and ask if there are any folks in the convention center that are choosing to speak either for or against this item, please come forward at this time. Make sure, make sure if you do that you state your name and your address clearly for the record. We want Ms. Bradshaw to make sure she gets it down on the record very, very well. We want Ms. Bradshaw to make sure she gets it down on the record very, very well. All right, seeing that there is no one present to speak in opposition or in support, and we did not receive any comments, public comments on the website, we will now close the public hearing. And Ms. Wolf, thank you very much. Are there any final questions or comments from the, from the planning commission?
Regarding to agenda item number nine, case Z-8-520, I would ask for approval. This request is consistent with the objectives and policies of the following plans adopted by the city of Wilmington. Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, the City of Wilmington Strategic Plan. Planning Commission considers its approval to be reasonable in the public interest because the proposal is generally consistent with the recommendations of both the city's strategic plan and the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan. The request is consistent with surrounding area and the proposed infill of this property would be similar to context to the existing neighborhood. Therefore, the planning commission would recommend approval of this request.
Thank you, Mr. Hovis. We have an approved, a recommended motion for approval. Do I have a second for that?
Second, Bowman.
Second from Mr. Bowman. I will now do roll call. Mr. Hovis?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Lyle?
Lyle, yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Sharp, yes.
Cortez?
Cortez, yes.
Mr. Woodruff?
Woodruff, yes.
And Mr. Collier, yes. So this item also moves forward seven to zero. All right, we are on the home stretch now. Item number 10 is the last new item on our agenda. This is also a rezoning of property containing 1.89 acres, and this is located at 6855 Market Street and 6004 Gordon Road from R15 Residential District to RB Regional Business District. And Patrick O'Mahony will be our planner for this item as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposal includes three parcels containing approximately 1.89 acres. Site is located near the intersection of Market Street and Gordon Road and was annexed effective January 31, 1999. The property currently contains two single-family dwellings. This map provides context and highlights the site location. This slide provides the existing conditions of the site. The two images are looking west towards the subject properties from Market Street. These images are of adjacent land uses. The properties are surrounded by vacant property directly to the east and north of the site. There are adjacent commercial uses shown to the south and northeast, shown in the images on the bottom of the screen. The site is currently zoned R15 Residential. It is also surrounded by nearby commercial uses to the north, south, and east, with regional business RB zoning completely surrounding the parcels. An existing single-family home remains to the west of the subject parcels. The Comprehensive Plan identifies the site as within a high-density transition area of opportunity and mixed-use place on the Comprehensive Plan's Growth Strategies map. The Comprehensive Plan calls for development and redevelopment that is compatible with the surrounding area and also supports development and redevelopment areas already served by adequate infrastructure. The proposed rezoning to RB Regional Business would apply an appropriate zoning classification that is consistent with the surrounding properties and allow for commercial redevelopment that is compatible with the surrounding area. Staff believes the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the recommendations of the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan and the focus areas of the city's strategic plan. Staff believes the request is reasonable and in the public interest and recommends approval of the request. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, sir. One question for you. The zoning all the way around the property is RB?
Correct.
Correct. So even though the land use may be slightly different, the zoning is still zoned RB?
Correct.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions for Mr. O'Mahony at this point? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Wolf?
Yes, thank you. This is Cindy Wolf, and I'm representing the owner, who does own several of the properties surrounding this also. This exhibit that the staff puts together is always sort of confusing. As you said, this is an island of R15, and everything around it is RB, but it happens to be vacant, and that's why it's colored white instead of the red. I can only assume that when the annexation occurred, since there were two homes here, they just decided to apply the residential zoning. And this will just make everything consistent and make it available for future development. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excuse me, thank you. I spoke with Mr. Wayne Clark about this, who was involved in the rezoning back in the day when that was done. And he said that they, the property owner specifically requested to leave at R15.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
I thought it was quite curious. Okay, sorry, that's a little aside. Are there any commission members that have any questions for the applicant at this time? If not, I will open the public hearing. And if there is anyone in the building that would like to speak for or against, please come forward at this time. We would like to have your comment put on the record. I'm being told there are no folks in the, in the building that would like to speak for or against. And as far as I know, we did not receive any public comment on that item either, correct? Correct. So at this time, I will close the public hearing. And I will ask the commission for a motion. Ms. Lyle?
Regarding agenda item number 10, requesting 6855 Market Street and 6804 Gordon Road rezoning from R15 to RB Regional Business, we recommend approval. This request is consistent with the objectives and policies of the following plans adopted by the city of Wilmington. Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, City of Wilmington Strategic Plan. Planning Commission considers its approval to be reasonable and in the public interest because the proposal is generally consistent with the recommendations of both the city's strategic plan and the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan. The proposed rezoning would apply an appropriate zoning classification that is consistent with surrounding properties and allow for commercial development that is compatible with the commercial node near the Market Street and Gordon Road intersection. Therefore, planning commission recommends the approval of this request.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lyle. We have a motion for approval by Commissioner Lyle. Do I have a second to this motion? A second. Second by Commissioner Hovis. At this point, we will have a roll call vote. Commissioner Woodruff?
Yes.
Sharp?
Sharp, yes.
Commissioner Cortez?
Cortez, yes.
Commissioner Hovis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Bowman, yes.
Commissioner Lyle?
Lyle, yes.
Commissioner Collier, yes. So this item also passes seven to zero. Again, that would conclude our regular items on our agenda. I would like to say thank you to all of the folks in the commission that are zooming in at this point and anyone that's listening from outside. I would also say to Don Bennett, thank you for hanging in with us. You may take the rest of the night off if you would like to at this point. And thank you, Ms. Bradshaw, because you have done a wonderful job organizing this and making sure that herding cats has worked out really well. So we appreciate it. I think it has gone way better than I would have anticipated. Staff has done a very, very good job, and the folks here at the convention center have really done a great job as well. We do have two more items on our agenda that are hopefully very short at this point. Do we have any items to bring forward from the commission? Seeing none? Do we have any items to bring forward from the staff? Is there anything we need to know from last night's council meeting?
Mr. Chairman, both items on last night's council meeting were approved. The one was the parking lot for the, the school between Wellington and Shipp guard Boulevard there. I mean, yeah, Shipp guard Boulevard. And the other one slips my mind, Brian. What was the second one?
It's slipping my mind as well.
I was gonna say Del Par, but I don't think that's right.
Del Par Lane. It's late and my brain's not working. It was the R5 Conditional District modification to allow the additional two single-family lots at the end of Del Par Lane.
That's right. And I would remind all the commissioners, as you well know, one week from today at 3:30, by this same method, we'll be holding the first of our many work sessions on the Land Development Code. It will be live-streamed on the city's website as well as on Spectrum Channel, Cable Channel 8 from 3:30 until 5:30 next Wednesday afternoon. And we'll be discussing Article 2, which is our zoning districts. And we would certainly encourage all the members of the commission, as well as the viewing audience out there, to go to the city's special website for the LDC Code Rewrite. And there is a, already on there, the full article draft, as well as a summary of changes proposed, as well as a summary presentation of just the significant changes that are being proposed as part of that draft. So that would be the way I would recommend the commission to be most prepared for the work session next Wednesday is to just perhaps take a few moments to listen to Christine Hughes' summary presentation on Article 2 in preparation for next Wednesday. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Any other items to bring forward?
Just as a reminder, the city will have its website open and available to accept comments for an additional 24 hours on the items that have been considered and voted on tonight as required by the law change earlier this week, just as a reminder.
Is it 24 hours or 48 hours?
24. We'll probably keep it honestly open until some point on Friday, just to make sure we have everything covered sufficiently. But it'll be at least 24 hours.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Bowman?
Chairman Collier, I thought you did an outstanding job. I really appreciate your leadership here with this new format. So thank you. I yield now to Jeff.
I yield to him, too.
I'll make a surprising motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, a second, and all in favor say aye. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.